I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 6:02 PM. And to start with roll call. Stuart Lander.
Here.
Brad Shear.
Here.
Kate Massonani.
Here.
Paula Whitford.
Yeah.
Michelle Brusseau.
Here.
And James Justebo.
Here.
And I, Carol Vetter, am here. I want to remind everybody to speak really close to your microphone so that we can make sure to get it on the recording. That would be really helpful. Thanks so much. All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. First up, we have comments from the community.
Mary Kuchar. Wearing a Drake May jersey, I see.
Welcome, Mary.
Okay, is that working? All right. Hello, I just wanted to come up here and make sure everybody is aware of an event that's coming up on 10/23 and it's a new group that they're trying to get started about getting community together and having different conversations about different issues. And it's going to be held, the first one, on 10/23. There, all of the community conversations will be at Peace Dale from 6:30 to 8:00. They provide childcare, there's snacks, the book is provided for you. So the first one is Calling In by Loretta Ross and it's about how to make change with those you'd rather cancel. So it's a good opportunity to get people together and have conversations and meet people in your community, but also have, you know, have a chance to say something about your opinions, but also hear other people's and work together. And I've done some of these book groups before with some of these people and it's very meaningful. So the first one is 10/23. You do have to register, but you can find the link to register at all the schools have these signs up and I think Johnny Cake has one there and not sure where else we posted it, but just want to let you know. And the next one is 11/20 and that one is by Slater. A true story of a racist social media account and the teenagers whose lives it changed. So we have some good topics and if you're interested in being part of these conversations, I encourage you to attend. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, we will close public comment. And we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, moving on to school committee business. So first up, the strategic planning draft priorities and goals. I will turn that over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public. So the presentation that is up before you was created and basically it is an abbreviated way to go through the draft that was originally posted. I would draw attention to that in this, the original document of the draft strategic plan working template that the mission and core beliefs have already been adopted. The vision of the graduate was adopted by prior committees and has been approved and subsequent program of studies for South Kingstown High School. And so before you is really the next or the third part of the strategic plan from the school, from the subcommittee. Next slide, please. So these priorities and goals came from, came out of trying to find direct alignment with our, the district's new mission statement. It was originally crafted by the central, central administration, then brought forward individually to principals, then discussed collectively with building principals, assistant principals and directors. And it was then agreed upon unanimously to forward on to the strategic planning committee. So what you have before you is gone through multiple iterations, but some of the things that are that have not changed is that again, our foundation is ultimately our core, our mission and our core beliefs about learning, which are before you. Next slide, please. But we were also cognizant of prior strategic plans as well as school committee feedback to prior presentations to not lose the work that has been done in the vision of the graduate. So if we can go back a few slides. So here before you are the the seven Cs of South Kingstown High School, which are aligned to the deeper learning competencies. And as mentioned in prior committees is also aligned to the priorities and goals before you. Next slide, please. The priorities and goals ultimately though, lie in our needs assessment, which is the equity audit that was conducted last year. And so as we go through the equity audit and those recommendations to make sure we are serving all students, we want to make sure that we are building on our strengths and our core values as well as our aspirations for students, not only while they're here with us, but also when they leave the hallowed halls of South Kingstown High School as graduates. And so what you see before you are the four draft priorities and goals that range everywhere from academic goals to social goals to student voice. So again, all are reflected and are aligned with our core beliefs. So in priority one, generally what we're talking about or looking to do is really the bulk of the work that happens every day or is getting most of people's attention, especially with the release of state testing results, and that is to increase proficiency rates and eliminate achievement gaps. We believe that this is best accomplished through our core beliefs and doubling down on our strengths of high expectations as well as making sure that there is equity in all we do. The next priority is build and maintain trust across all stakeholders. Without trust, as we know, the research shows that schools, districts, if they have low levels of trust, they will not see improvement, whether it be in the school culture or in the academics. Priority three, strengthen inclusive practices in special education services, whether this be through the equity audit or the RIDE reports as well as parents' feedback. We know that we need to serve all students and the only way that we can do that is by purposefully focusing in on elements of inclusion. And then last, but certainly not least, priority four, ensure that students and families' voice are present in the decision-making. Again, going back to our core belief of voice. The, it is the beginning ultimately of our mission is that in partnership with the community and we truly cannot achieve our mission to be in partnership with the community if we are not listening to or giving voice to those who we serve. And that is why ultimately it's in priority four. Next slide, please. However, again, academics being the core of what public education was set up to do. Well, I, what you have here is ultimately what sets the course for all schools. We've set for district-wide grade-based goals, but an overarching district goal, and that is ultimately priority one to ensure proficiency rates increase for all students and that we work to eliminate achievement and opportunity gaps through high expectations and equity. With a district-wide goal that in the, in five years from now, by the close of the 2930 school year, we will eliminate achievement gaps so that proficiency rates for all student groups are within 10 percentage points of their peers across all grade levels. No easy task. Ambitious to say the least, especially when we're talking about tests in many cases that are designed to get 50/50, but more on that in later presentations. So ultimately here are the grade band goals. What we want to do is we want to focus in on, again, on the core, on the core priorities and in the core skills and learning that can then influence all others. So as we refer in many cases to power standards, these are ultimately the power priorities, if you will, academically speaking. In early elementary from K through two, we propose focusing in on reading proficiency as measured by STAR assessments, again, with no group falling below 80%. In upper elementary, we then increase that or we then increase or go to the RICAS and make sure that we are covering all subjects in terms of tested on RICAS, which is ELA and mathematics. Again, with no group falling below 75%. The middle school goal would be to continue that by the end of eighth grade, that we have 85% proficiency on both ELA and mathematics with no group falling below 75%. And last and certainly not least, at the high school, that we have equitable representation across all programs that award credit or add to the diploma's value by all students. And that's ultimately currently AP honors and CTE programs. And we would want to do that while also maintaining or in some cases for certain student groups increasing to 90% graduation rates for all groups. Any questions on priority one? Okay. Moving on to priorities two through four that incorporate our core values of trust and respect, inclusion and voice. So priority two and trust and respect, our goal would be to increase student sense of belonging across every school in the district, across every grade band according to survey works. Again, by the close of the 2930 school year. In priority three, we get to our inclusion and special education focus, which again is also goes back to the RIDE Special Ed report, which is to reduce disproportionate special education identification so that no group exceeds 1.5 times of their district enrollment percentage. And last but not least, in terms of voice, priority four, with a goal to establish formal student and parent advisory structures in every school with documented evidence of influence on at least two major decisions per year. Are there any questions on priorities two through four?
Can you talk a little bit about how the groups in priority four are different than the SITS?
Sure. So the sit, this would be separate from the school improvement. This would not be legislatively driven. And so what we're trying to do is increase those opportunities. In some cases, it might be existing student groups that currently aren't, you know, or don't focus on decision-making in terms of the school, whether it be the program of studies or the handbook, but operate in terms of, let's say, their, their class or the student council, but don't have input in terms of school operations. Same thing in terms of, it would be for parent groups or to have parent groups or communities come in and or at least seeking their feedback and input. It would be separate or in addition to. So in order, because there are some that again, as we create school improvement teams, people come in, they're appointed, they stay for their term and they're focused in on the school improvement goals, but there are certain things that come up that are meaningful or valuable to families and students that might not fall under the purview of sit or they might not be members of sit or might not be able to make their meetings, but we don't want their, we want their voice to be heard. And so this would be in addition to.
It's probably premature in asking, but I'm assuming that as this gets implemented over time, there will be strategy as to ways to bring families and students' voice to the table because as anybody who's been involved in any sort of voice at any table over the past couple decades in, especially around education, very few parents engage and it's always the same parents. It's always the same students bringing, and so the goal is to have a wide variety of parents or students who wouldn't normally come to the table. So I think it would be nice at some point to know what the plan is in order to engage.
So actually wonderful transition to the next slide, please. So the next step, if these are approved, is to go back to our administrators and work and support them and ultimately come up with the initiatives in order to address these priorities and, and goals and how they're going to meet them. Additionally, what we would do, and there's a template here is that ultimately we would create scorecards for the district, for the district and each school so that they could track progress of those initiatives depending on, on what they, on what they would be. So again, in terms of what the specific or how all of these things are going to get done, we want to wait or we're on a holding pattern until these are accepted because we don't want to go and start coming up with ideas for something that might not be a goal. Additionally, just like, or from a prior report is our community outreach that was done at each open house this year and making sure that we go directly to the, to the users and making, in this case, our families and students to find out before we design or implement anything ultimately what resonates with them and what would bring them to the table. So the next step, if this were to be approved as this, as our next phase in our strategic plan, we would then be going back to the building administration, school improvement teams and working on what initiatives would be implemented in order to achieve those goals.
I'm just curious as to how on this slide, these buckets were come, came about mainly because I'm curious that there may be cross group. So someone may fall into the white student and also the economically disadvantaged and also multilingual. So how do we, I guess it's, it's like, how do you differentiate? How do you make sure that the numbers aren't getting?
So we take this directly from the, from Ride reporting and so it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be coming up with anything that is
You're not, you're not reinventing the wheel. You're pulling from the existing data.
And if anything, when we get down to that school level, this might be challenging because of our end sizes and we might need to do some statistical analysis, whether it be bringing in multiple years of cohorts, going into averages. But again, those are, those are compared to some of the challenges that would be there to, to achieve these goals, we would, we would be able to figure out a way to do that. But ultimately what we came up with is what is reported already or readily accessible to us in existing platforms or, or in existing reports coming to us from the state or that we are reporting out.
Smacking everything around.
Why, I think this is great. I, I really like the format of the strategic plan. I do have a question. I remember. I do have a question. I remember. Earlier in the year, when it was brought to our attention, that there were some students that were not being able to take a CET, a CTE program. In the high school, if they had. Chronic absence absentee and also were not doing well in the middle school. And I asked if that could be looked into so that we could find out why those students, why that was a factor. Into why they weren't be, wouldn't be able to apply. And I will have to say, when I think of our inclusive piece, we're not being inclusive if we cannot figure out. Why those students are not able to apply to that CTE program.
So that, that in terms of our application process to the CTE program is something that I can report back on next, next time we meet. I haven't done a deep dive yet into our CTE application. I know that every. District has to have a CTE application process, both for in district and out of district students. And that the metrics there are, are set up, but in terms of disqualifiers, I'm. I'm ignorant of those at this time, and so I'll need to get back to you on that.
So what I'm hearing you say is it's a process, it's practice, it's a process.
Yes, or to apply for admission, to apply for admission into a, excuse me, into a CTE program. And whether, because, so I believe that all students, so students would be eligible to take. Certain courses that are in CTE pathways. However, priority is given to those students who have been admitted into a CTE pathway. So if I'm in the carp, so I might, so if I'm a eighth grader and I'm, and I apply for and, and admitted to the carpentry CTE. That doesn't mean if Mr. Seeger is not in the CTE program that he can't take a woodworking course. It's just that I get priority. Because I'm a CT, I'm in the program and I need that class to achieve the credential that I've applied to and been accepted to. But in terms of admittance to that program or that pathway and what barriers or roadblocks might be in students' ways, I'll, I'll need to get back to, I'll need to get back to you.
When you say that pathway, are you talking about roots stem? Or like, because in the middle school that, that there isn't a pathway. Correct? Like there.
No, they, they would just matriculate if eighth grader, they can come here regardless. They do not need to apply for a CTE pathway. So.
That, that's correct. I do, I do know.
But they can, but they can.
Those that. So there seems to be the complaints that I got, that there is some barriers. That are preventing some students from being able to apply to the CTE programs here at the high school. And it's, it's. The application process is that's, it's in eighth grade, right?
Correct.
Which is why they went there today.
Yep.
Or yesterday, one of these two days anyway, today, right? Or last week and did the introduction to the CTE program.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, in, in terms of that maybe if, if. Well, regardless, because I know it's also a school improvement goal and one that the South Kingstown High School has made progress on in terms of making sure that students graduate with credentials. Is that that is, that would be one strategy, that would be a potential strategy for the high school in terms of that goal to review their. Application process and look for ways to not disconnect students, but bring students in or to say, we are losing X. So students are applying, but X percent are not meeting the criteria. What is something that we could put in place? Either to make up for that or reconsider, or do we even, or do we need to eliminate that because ultimately that's stopping. Motivated students from getting into class or to getting into the classes that motivate them. So again, what specifically those barriers are, but again, that would be part of the strategic plan and something that I would expect the high school to do.
So I do want to say that for the record, we will put that on the next agenda to, to get more clarification on that. Okay? Okay, bringing it back to the presentation that before us though, I, Stuart, I saw you had a question.
Yes. So. If I understand correctly, the baseline is coming from right, from the actual. Information that we're receiving from right, right?
Yes. And when it, when it, in terms of disaggregated data, yes.
To, to basically put all the information in, in.
Yep.
Twenty twenty five TBDs.
Correct. I would go, correct. If where there's data present, I would go either into our state testing that's already disaggregated or go into survey works. And go into the, the characteristics that are reported.
The early elementary would be our own star testing, right?
Yes.
That's not right.
That would not be right.
Okay. And that would populate that. Then as we go through the years, year twenty six and on through twenty thirty. Is that end of year? Data that gets inputted into there at that point that is then fed to us again by the same, it's populated through the same way.
Based, based on the current metrics with the exception of, so the updates in terms of the, in terms of the four priorities. Early elementary could be updated. Three times a year as we issue the, as we issue. Excuse me, as we issue the screenings, three times a year in terms of star testing for the others, they would be annual reports.
So that's, that's where I was going, I guess. That, how do you create, how can we create milestones? To know where people are before the end of the year, when we get the data back as opposed to making sure. That we're implementing those strategies, those things to help get people to that point.
Yep. So there's lots of, so there, there are. Things that we could put in place for certain ones. However, you know, you could create local, you could create local surveys. You could, you know, you could issue your survey works questions at a midpoint, but only in that. You know, only as a temperature check, much like we do or did last year and will do again this year with the end of the quarter one feedback. For, for schools is create some local metrics. You know, didn't want to go too far down that rabbit hole if these, you know, first we would take a look at what's in place already organically, much like. When we talked about Broad Rock Middle School, that connections survey that they do already as part of, as, as part of that, to make sure that. Each student as an adult that they can turn to, you know. That's an example of, you know, we would take a look at what we have already and see if that can fill a need, you know, we can run reports based off of. Based off of those screens in star testing for all grade level or for all schools. As a data point to see what they're correlate. Actually, it's something that we do need to do and relates back to high expectations is. We need to change our baseline data or standard for our star assessments. It's currently set at forty percent. It needs to go up to around fifty percent, which is once again closest to, and that would be another indicator. We just, again, haven't gone that far down progress monitoring tools yet because these haven't been once, if. The board, you know, if the committee puts a gavel down on these, that's the work that we would start to undertake.
But that's what would be next. If we approve this, then the next part is getting those milestone metrics in place to.
Right.
To monitor the progress.
Yes. So at that, so the next step would be again, if these were to be approved, to then collectively. Come up with the initiatives that are appropriate, whether it be district wide initiatives or grade based initiatives or school based, again, each school having their own culture. Having their own systems and operations that are in place already, but to, to flush those out as an administrative team. And then based on that. Come back in and say, okay, listen, how can we do quarterly mid-year checks? So if we were to go into this complete scorecard, it does have quarterly, it does have a quarter section for quarterly reviews. But again, does the data that we're using as, you know. In this forward facing piece, that does, that only comes out.
That will come.
Annually currently now.
Right.
What, what I would expect and what we, what I would like is to make sure that in our strategic plans, that this is something that it's not like, well, we set this goal five years ago and. Well, we're setting a course and we're on it. If, no, we need to be able to pivot. So it would be something that while we're taking these moonshot goals. If something's not working, we need to, we need to change it and we're going to do that. We would then be bringing it back. To the steering committee and then to the committee here for approval if we were going to take a change. Let's say survey works goes away. Let's say there are, we find that there are more important metrics or something that we'd start taking a look at. You know, course based assessments or common, common formative assessments or if, you know, so there's a lot of things.
Yeah. Which metrics you use is certainly. Where I think you would and your team would be able to, you know, implement those things, right? I think we just want to see that. No, no child left behind. If you go back to that, you know, that idea that. I guess the main concern is that rather than a one year look each year. To make sure that we do have something in, in place as you're speaking to. That shows us how people are progressing, the students are progressing in each of these categories. So that we know where they are and if we need to accelerate or provide additional services that we do that.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I'm, I might request Mr. Badraza and Chair that are, that as. Part of the answer to Ms. Woodford's question about. Some, some goal, if I'm not, if I'm misinterpreting what you were trying to say, please slap me or something. The, if, if chronic absenteeism is preventing some of our young people accessing the CTE programs. Can, can we see at our next meeting some data, information? That type of thing about. How, I know we've been working for several years in the district on addressing chronic absenteeism. So. I think it would be helpful if we saw what kinds of things have been put in place and what kind of results we've gotten. I had to, but go ahead.
Absolutely. I, I think that's a great. Component to look at. In addressing what is, what barriers are there to our CTE program? So definitely we can look at, look at that as well. I just want to make sure that. The superintendent and his team has time to put together information for us so that we get good information.
Well, if it, if we don't get that information at the next meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that. I, I get that. My other comment. Is off what Mr. Badraza said about the documented, because I serve on the strategic. Planning Subcommittee Steering Committee, I don't know what we're calling ourselves, along with Mr. Shear. And Mr. Seeger and Mr. Badraza, one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was. That once we, we'll never be finished with this document is it was my point when I brought up the. Matter as a means of discussion, because this has to be a living, breathing document. That, that we as a district. Worked by and, you know, as, as we go through, you know, we approve it, but then. We get feedback and it has to be modified and that's going to be an ongoing, ongoing situation.
Any other? Comments or questions, Kate?
I just have actually one question and one comment. So my question is, and you may have already said it, but I just missed it. Is the baseline of twenty twenty five, when will that be populated? Will that be at?
So we can start populating it now. We, we could have populated it with survey works when, so we can start populating some of them. Some of them now, we'll wait to make sure that, again, when this first screenshot or was, was, was created, we've done some changing of the goals and of the baseline. Actually. My thanks to the members of the Subcommittee for pointing out that we wouldn't be able to get to a certain metric. With that, with a certain subgroup or with a subgroup population falling at a certain number, it was impossible. So we had to change those metrics and those are not reflected on the screenshot there. Again, it's just an, and I, you know, more of a. Template of how we would monitor and, and, and ultimately publicly disclose, you know, how close we are to the moon as we're, as we're taking those shots.
No, perfect. And then my comment would be, and I know this because I have the luxury of attending all the town council meetings. Oftentimes our community at large, it's not necessarily. Our student based community, it's our taxpayer based community. They have lots to say about our education system on a regular basis at the meetings. And what I would like to see maybe as a suggestion for the strategic planning Subcommittee. Is maybe have an agenda item at an upcoming town council meeting. That's a separate discussion from our budget subcommittees and to share the work that's going on with the strategic planning. And I say that because if you've lived in this community for the past. Ten years, you know that for. Eight and a half of those ten years, we were in turmoil in the Southeast Sound School District. And our numbers were sub, what we would want. It was subpar. So, and I think we, we, many of us own that. And there have been many steps taken over the, especially with our new leadership team, there's been huge strides taken. But there's. The damage of previous years has done, it's going to take time to undo that. And this is going to actually, it's beautiful foundation to map out, this is where we are right now. This is where we want, this is the plan that we're putting into place to improve where we are. And then this will map that. And I think. Kind of tying it, it's like at the same time that our new school is being built and then there will be updates going forward throughout the district in various ways. Kind of showing the, the new trajectory that South Kingstown is on. And I think this being a foundation for it and saying, look, we own what has gone on. But many, many of you weren't here and weren't responsible, but as a district, we, we said, okay. We understand where we have fallen down and now this is how we're picking up and we're moving forward. And I think our community in general, because I often get a lot of, a lot of folks call me. Who are taxpayers who don't have children in our district and just want to be heard because they don't feel heard at the town hall. And they don't come here, which I find strange, but that's where they go. And they do tie it to budget often, but they just want to see that the money that they're investing into our schools, especially with the new build is being, is going towards. A top tier education and this shows that that's what we're working for.
So I just want to clarify. Are you asking that we do this kind of presentation to show? Our work on the strategic plan as part of a joint meeting with the town council? Are we asking for a separate? Town council joint meeting? I mean, what, what do you think is the best way to? I'd, I'd like to push this information out there. I'm just going to clarify, I want you to clarify exactly what you think is best.
I talk too much, I guess. So I, I actually don't think it should be a joint. So I, I actually don't think it should be a joint meeting. I think it should be maybe the South Kingstown School District Strategic Subcommittee. Gets on the town council agenda and comes just like the housing authority does and the school building committee does and just get. To be on there and it doesn't, it can be in January, February, March. It doesn't matter. There's no, clearly it would be once this is voted on and this is what we're moving towards. I think it would just be a great way to basically tell the taxpaying community of South Kingstown. Like we are looking to make sure that we're not just building a shiny item out there in Hazard Field. We want a top quality education to be cultivated there as well.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure exactly what that, what you were thinking. So I think that's a great idea. I'd like this work to have a few more months for this subcommittee to kind of finalize things like you suggest. But later in the winter, early spring might be a great time to. Get on their meeting and, and, because you're right. They obviously don't come to our meeting, but, but we do want to get the information out there. So.
What I would also say is that. Once we have the priority, based upon what we're presenting here tonight in, in total. Depending on the, the committee's appetite to take action or approve or have us move forward. It is going to set, it's setting the foundation, just like the, I mean, ultimately the, our. Our mission and core values has, has done that. However, the, once I know. Once I, once we have this strategic plan and we have these approved, these four priorities become ultimately our North Star. And doing so with every student in mind and making sure that we hit these ambitious targets. And, and for those who are at home watching or will watch at another time, you know, these are. To the point of, you know, that they're overly ambitious, but nothing in terms of that's worth doing. It, you know, we, we have, it, it's worth taking that risk. It's worth putting it out there on the table. It's worth putting it. Up front and center. And so I would see it. As early as preliminary budget discussions, because. This next year's budget with a strategic plan, goals and priorities in place. The goal of next year is not to recreate this year again, next year. And so this will be front and center as well as will some of our priorities in terms of, in terms of spending, whether it be for professional development. Or it be for new programs or shifting programs. So I think that, or I don't think, I know that as soon as this is adopted, that. Our team is, is ready to, to, to chart the course and, and. Stand publicly and stand by it and, and, and fight for it.
So if there's no other further questions, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve this and get this going and move forward.
I would like to second that. But I have a question, a comment. I think Ms. Massenanti's idea of getting it out to the town is a good idea. I think part of that. Presentation, discussion, whatever we're going to call it. Has to be. Sorry, the school committee member left. This is the educator. That has to be to explain to some people without children in the district. Who maybe have never had children in the district or have children that are my kids' age, which means they've been gone for over 20 years. It needs to be explained to the community members. Why we're not educating our kids the way I was educated in the three-room mattoonic school. Because there are people. Out there that think just teach penmanship, arithmetic and reading and you'll be fine. And we all know, our teachers know, our building and district administrators know. We need to prepare these kids for jobs that don't exist today. And we need to put that out there to the community as part of this presentation.
I just want to make a comment because I, I, I totally appreciate the, all the work that's gone into this. And I think this is a fantastic move in the right direction for the community and for our, our learners. I think it shows that we are really striving to improve the education, improve the outcomes. And, you know, echo Ms. Massenanti's comments, it's, it's not just about the building out there. It's about the education inside that building. I think this gives us a great guideline to get there. So I'm fully in support of this. I think this is great.
I agree. I think there's been a lot of great work that's gone into this. And I just want to say thank you to the members of the Subcommittee. For all of their efforts and, and hard work. It really shows in, in the outcomes here. So with that, we have a motion and a second to approve the four priorities and the attached goals. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank, thank you. And, and all the hard work that went into it. You guys have done a really great job. All right. With that, we will move on to B, Discussion, Action, Strategic Planning Draft, Goals, Initiative, IB for All.
If you thought the first presentation was ambitious. I present to you the next part, which is also went before the. Was part of the same process, again, district administration and collaboration with one another. Then to individual principals, then to the collective body for discussion, then. Then moved on to the Strategic Planning Subcommittee. So when it got to the Strategic Planning Subcommittee, there was lots of discussion. I, I, I would qualify it as a little bit of a, not a little, some, some excitement around this idea. But ultimately. How it fit, is it a goal? Is it initiative? Is it a program? Much like some people going, what is IB? What, what is it? And so next slide, please. And so before you tonight is. We are asking either for, we have a range of, we do have this for discussion and/or action. Ultimately, we are looking for some guidance. Originally. This was framed as an overarching goal and an initiative that would. Be part of a district-wide plan that ultimately we believe can help us achieve all four of those priorities. So the IB for all idea, which I'll put it as an idea right now. And I will read for the, for those at home, to bring our mission and graduate profile to life. While simultaneously supporting our efforts to reach our four strategic priorities and goals. South Kingstown School District will strive to become Rhode Island's first district to implement international baccalaureate programming. At all schools and grade levels. Currently, the International Baccalaureate offers programs in the primary years, K through five. The middle years in six through eight. A diploma program in nine through 12 and a career-related program in grades 11 through 12. Currently in the state of Rhode Island, Little Compton runs or has the middle years program. And I believe Proust and St. Andrews. Have the diploma program. Outside of that programming, the IB does not have a, a, a firm hold in, in Rhode Island. Connecticut, yes, lots of magnet schools as well as in Massachusetts. Has a plethora of IB schools. However, an IB district even within those schools is, is a different, it's a different vision, if you will. Next slide, please. So again. If people are sick of hearing it, boy, we've got a lot, a long time together because, you know. We want our students to thrive and what that means is different for each and every student. What that, what, not only what that means, but what students need. And ultimately how we try to connect. The knowledge and skills that are gained that are seemingly unconnected and bring them together. Ultimately, when students can do that, they are able to thrive. And the IB, we believe, supports those core beliefs. So with trust, we would be implementing the IB with transparent communication and meaningful parent voice. To me, there is no higher expectation or standard than the International Baccalaureate Program and standards. But universal access to an inquiry-based curriculum, not. Ride is telling us to implement, pick a curriculum and implement it. It is again, an inquiry-based and that begins in that, or that would begin in elementary school and work all the way up. Respect, again, the IB is known for culturally responsive practices as well as multilingual learning. And in fact, it is a requirement that a second language be taught in IB and IB schools. It is a, that's one of their foundations. Inclusion, built-in accommodate because we're building this or would be building it from the ground up. We would be building in accommodations for students with disabilities. In terms of voice, the IB programming highlights that self and it separates them from other programs. Because it's not only inquiry-based, but it becomes student inquiry-based. Where student, we're teaching students how to ask big questions and then how to seek out the answers. And we support them along the way. And then ultimately equity, because again, as we implement this and based on the four priorities and goals that were just listed. We have to have a systematic approach to closing achievement gaps. Next slide, please. And here, the, the IB program also supports our vision of the graduate. The, or the seven Cs, critical thinking, again, real-world problems, inquiry-based. Creativity, original projects, or projects, ideas, portfolios and innovations that are student-driven. There's a character component to our seven Cs that again, also resonates with IB International Baccalaureate. Where again, service through the service learning and responsibility. In terms of communication, students are again, expressing their ideas, not only in their native language, but in multiple language and across different formats. Collaboration, that doesn't happen in just independently. It happens in, in group work and small group as class projects. Citizenship, students take informed action on local and global issues, again, when they set their, their projects and their research questions. And then ultimately content mastery, students develop deep knowledge while understanding how it all interconnects. Again, that's, it's that transdisciplinary instruction rather than, rather than being siloed. Next slide, please. It is, it is our thinking that again, the IB programming as an overarching either initiative or goal would support our four priorities that you just approved. So. Again, the rigorous inquiry-based curriculum all provides all students with access to challenging coursework. That develops critical thinking, problem-solving and communication skills measured by proficiency assessments that are. Both locally generated as well as that the IB generates as well. By implementing IB universally, rather than as a program for some students. We eliminate systems that have historically limited opportunity for students. Again, this is, this is not something that'd be like, oh, what, you know. That, that, that's an IB class. I'm only getting those skills. I'm only get, I'm only involved in projects if I'm taking an IB course. No, this becomes the overarching, the overarching model and in terms of, of content and curriculum delivery. To be clear on that though, the IB does not have, you know, they don't. They do not care whether you are using Pearson, your own locally-generated curriculum, so long as it aligns with their standards. It is not something that is, that we would be disconnecting the work from the adoption of high-quality curricular materials. They want to see how those materials are utilized and how they're implemented. Next slide, please. We will also believe that in terms of the trust and respect, again, we would be designing our IB programs around inclusive. Learning communities where students explore their identities while learning to appreciate diverse perspectives. The IB learner profile attributes, which includes caring, or excuse me, being caring, open-minded, principled and balanced. Provides a common language for building respectful relationships, again, priority two. The IB's emphasis on international-mindedness helps students understand and value differences. Creating school climates where all students feel they belong and they see themselves as well. Next slide, please. Priority three, inclusion. Again, if we design our IB programs to be inclusive from the ground up with multiple ways for students to demonstrate learning. Or the universal design for learning as, as may have come up previously. And we have in built-in differentiation that supports diverse learners. So we don't want to create, if we're, what we don't want is we, I don't want the IB to become an IB school. And we are then saying, we're removing you from something. This is something that we are adding for every student. It is not a for some only. Rather than removing students from rigorous curriculum when they struggle, IB approaches provide scaffolds and support within that challenging. Learning environment. This is reduces again, the over-identification of students of four colors for special education. While ensuring students with disabilities access grade-level content alongside their peers. Again, to get to our over, to get to our identification and gap closure as well as inclusive practices. Next slide, please. And then last but not least, our priority four, voice. Student voice and agency are central to IB programming. Students don't just receive the curriculum, they help shape their learning through inquiry questions, action projects. And their choices about how to demonstrate their understanding. IB's emphasis on student-driven learning empowers young people to become active participants in their education. And similarly, IB implementation cannot occur if it does not include authentic. Family partnership structures where parents provide meaningful input into program design and school decisions. Next slide, please. How does this fit in with a five-year strategic plan? Again, this would all be subject, all of this is tentative to the first marker, which could still occur this year and can still occur this year. Is a feasibility and readiness study for all of our, all five schools in the district. Then following up the next year with beginning a candidacy process and professional development of which is required. Not only do you need to have certain foundational aspects to your operations, to your curriculum, but you must provide professional development. Both to administration and to educators. Also, the candidacy timeline and implementation is different for the different grade levels. For example, at the primary years or at the elementary schools, a candidacy, you, when you are in the candidacy phase. You are able to promote and implement IB programming. That is not the case at the diploma level or at the high school. You must go through the accreditation before you can, before you are allowed to call yourself an IB school. Or to implement formal IB programming. So things will look very, have the potential to look very different depending on the school's readiness, the district's readiness. As well as the programs that we're able to apply for. By 27, 28, we see initial programming implementation at pilot schools is the wrong, is the wrong term. But at ready schools or approved schools, 28, 29, expand to every school in the district. And then again, by the end of this five-year plan to achieve full IB authorization at all grade levels. Which would again, make South Kingstown the only IB district. In Rhode Island. Next slide, please. Getting though to the root of some of the questions that came up in the previous conversation. And again, going back to our mission in partnership with the community, what does this mean for our community? Well, we believe that by implementing IB for all, South Kingstown will again, get to our core part of the mission, which is preparing all students for success. Preparing all students to thrive regardless of their pathway. regardless of their pathway that they take at any point in their life. We also believe that our model would provide equitable education to all students rather than a separate program. And then last but not least, in terms of resonating with the outside community, the implementation for IB for all, I believe, would make South Kingstown School District become a destination district, not only in the state, but in the, in the region. It would be, we would become a regional destination, again, seeking families that are seeking the highest standards and that are seeking this international-mindedness, inquiry-driven education for their most precious assets, their children. Next slide, please. So the point of this presentation is ultimately to introduce this goal or initiative, again, where it fits into the strategic plan is up for debate. So hence, we're here seeking the committee's guidance and/or approval, depending on where you would like to go. I'd like to hear from folks in terms of, do you also, as people who have lived here, who have been part of this community, who have gone through the years that you've been here, do you see the alignment of priorities with our mission and values? And does the IB for all, as an overarching comprehensive goal, address, do you see, potentially, if you know enough about the IB, to see those connections? And then ultimately, we're looking for implementation timeline and ultimately, is it feasible? Because I see that potentially this body could vote to approve and say, make it a goal, make it an initiative, make it whatever you want, go for it, get it in the strategic plan, make it happen. So approve and go forward. We could put it in as an initiative, put it, or go forward. Or the last aspect of this would be, do we conduct the feasibility study first? To then see what are, before putting it into the strategic plan? So conduct the feasibility study, see where each school is in the district so that we see the potential, both, you know, promoters and inhibitors moving forward. And then we would, based on that information, either continue or revisit as, whether to include this in our strategic plan or as an initiative. And so with that, next slide.
We just go down the road. So I want to start with, I applaud you in what I would consider this as a BHAG. I can't give what that actually stands for, given that we're in a public forum, but if you would like to know, but it's big goals and there's words in, anyway. So I applaud you for really thinking out of the box and showing how this supports your initial presentation of the strategic plan that we've just said, yeah, let's go ahead. And yeah, I know that it would be really cool if we just said, sure, go ahead, do it, that'd be great. I have a few questions, as I'm sure everyone does. The first part that's missing for me is whenever I was asked to do these types of presentations in my past life, was what's the financial impact? Where, where's the financial piece that goes along with this? We know where we are budgetarily and some of the challenges, how does that, something like this, what's the impact of this type of an approach, even the feasibility approach? To look, you know, what are the types of costs that go in to that? Do we have the money for that? Does that make sense? I, you know, anything that supports what you're hoping or see as a potential to bring people in from outside districts and even regionally is a worthy goal. It's worthy to vision and mission, so I applaud that. Again, I, I'm just not sure, you know, how does that, how does something this big get implemented without understanding what the budgets are? And I'd be interested, from your point of view, what you actually see as our obstacles to making this happen.
So I think our obstacle, well, the first is that in, there are certain, so I do not have some fiscal components or, or things that have come back to us. So if a school, let's say, went through a feasibility study and said, we have all the, we have all the, all, all of the priorities, or we have a plan to get those in place. Ultimately, the application for candidacy, if everything were in place, is $4,000 per school. And then the cost of professional development for required training for the, for the principal and the head of the school. So if we were, if every school in the district were ready to do it, it would be about $20,000 for the application and review. And then the prof, an extra $5,000, let's say, because it's about $7,000, or $7,000, excuse me, $750 for the, for the training workshop for the principals, if everybody were in, were, were in place. Outside of that, in terms of, hey, or how many teachers would need to get professional development or those types of schedules, I have not gone out. But in terms of, if all of a sudden we went through this feasibility component and a school was energized by it and ready for it and wanted to apply, that would be the, that, that's our delta for the, for the, the candidacy application. Barriers, obviously fiscal. Currently, our elementary schools do not offer world language. However, given that so many of our conversations during the past year plus, especially at open houses where people, I moved to this district for DLI. I moved here for languages that are now not present in our elementary schools. We see that as resonating and, and being a, a component that would go forward. However, where does that fit in? How does that fit in? Depending on, you know, how many teachers, so the professional development cost unknown would be what happens with federal dollars moving forward with Title II, where some of our, you know, a large chunk of professional development dollars can come from and would need to be attached to. What are, what are some of those pieces? So those are the two biggest pieces, as well as identifying, there does need to be at each school, outside of the principal of the school, there does need to be an IB coordinator whose job half of the time is to make sure that, that the program is being implemented with fidelity. So those are the three major implications that I see just off the top of my head before going into. So it would be a language program, because I will say this, and for the record, that in no way, shape, or form will I advocate for a primary year program being implemented at one or two elementary schools only, it's all three or nothing. So that, that obviously pushes the price point as well as, you know, when you have different schedules or different components. So that's something that adds to that, adds to that cost. But is that present at the high school? Not, not necessarily at the middle school, not necessarily, we already have world languages being offered and we have them now as graduation requirements. Again, and in addition to the history of the DLI component. Again, a robust component here within the community. So those are just three potential obstacles. Additionally, and I'll be learning more, should we be interested in moving forward to learn more or implement about what ultimately our obligation would be to, you know, demonstrate that this is sustainable fiscally. Thank you.
Brad?
I think Kate has to go to the town council meeting, so we're gonna let her go first.
It's true, go ahead, Kate.
Thank you, Brad. I, I've heard of this previously, a previous superintendent decade or more ago had floated the program, not a full district implementation, so I'm familiar. In theory, oh my God, how awesome would this be? In, in reality and practice, a lot of pause from my perspective, but you're hitting upon all the reasons why. We've, we've, we've taken huge moments to try to transform South Kingstown in various ways. And we've created inequity, we've created division, we've created haves and have-nots. But, so it sounds like you're, you're being very mindful and thoughtful about that as you investigate this. I still, I, I would have too many questions personally to be able to vote on this tonight, if it, if we needed to do an action tonight. And so I guess my, my question would be, is there like a time? Because in theory, like I said, especially matching up with the strategic plan that you just laid out, what, who wouldn't want to be like, yeah, why not? It's a great, what a great vehicle to make all that happen. But I feel like there's a gotcha in, not from you, but in, in the, in like, why haven't other schools done this? Like what is, what is that barrier? So what I would personally like to see is maybe more conversation about it, maybe at the next, and that's just me, there's clearly going to be six other people, you know, weighing in. But that's just my perspective is, I would want to kind of pump the brake on action tonight so that we could really truly understand a little bit more financial impact, curricular impact, faculty impact. Like kind of, there's, there's, yeah, there's a lot of different pieces that I just wouldn't comfortable voting on for this evening, so.
Sure.
That's helpful. And I have to go now, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Just for the record, Kate is going to the town council meeting because she is chair of the school building committee and needs to be at that meeting. All right. So Brad.
Similarly, I've, by fiscal concerns, and we've done sort of similar things before where we've hired language teachers at the elementary's level, for example, and had to lay them off within a couple of years for fiscal reasons. You know, the, the part about attracting more students is the part that's really unpredictable and has a potentially very positive financial impact. So it sort of makes sense to implement at the high school first and maybe attract and retain some of those students. But we actually have a larger group leaving at the elementary level for charter schools. And if we could retain a relatively small percentage of them because of this program, then that would take care of our, of the financial impact. But it's hard to predict that until we understand the value that people in the community place on having their kids in the program, because it, it would rival a lot of charter school sort of programs. So I don't know how to put a number on that, but I think it's worth considering that although more expensive to implement at three schools at once, it might be worthwhile because we could retain some of those charter students. The other piece that unfortunately I couldn't, I couldn't be there to hear the discussion about is, I'd like more information about how, how this interacts with CTE programs. I know there is a career aspect to IB, but I'm not sure specifically when it comes to our CTE programs. And again, a way to attract students to our CTE programs potentially is that they have this added piece to it, assuming that there's, there's integration, so maybe you could talk about how that works.
So, and I can, you know, like, whatever I, there's more that I don't know than I do. So, but it, where I can answer questions specifically, I will. So the, in order to receive a quote-unquote IB diploma, one would take, at the diploma level, one needs to take eight IB courses and successfully, and successfully pass those. On the career path, one takes their, one needs to take two IB courses and then their career, their career-informed or career-approved program that they basically endorse an existing pathway. So getting the, the CP endorsement would require two IB courses and then the fulfillment of the CTE. So ultimately, it would be a, if you, another stamp or validation of, of, of the diploma from an outside. I think of it as an accrediting body. So eight for the diploma, for an IB diploma, and two plus the career pathway for the CP.
Paula?
I just hate to see us take an initiative to implement anything new other than our standard education and the curricula that we use today. And the reason why I say that is because, you know, we were going pretty strong with our DLI program and it was one of the things that I supported while running to have this seat at the table. But what I realized after I got at the table was, is that the funding dried up. And so we don't want to start a program and have a lot of families, you know, coming, such as some have already done for the DLI program, here for the program, and then it, it can, it's not sustainable, you know? And, and so that's where my concerns come in, is being able to maintain it once we've started and also keep it inclusive and keep the equity of it for all. You know, I mean, that's always going to be my concern is, is being all-inclusive and having our equity be intact.
Yeah. And having visited IB schools in my, in my former life, I went to Provincetown where they implement the middle-years program, but it's, it's for all. And again, it's for all, and in terms of how they happen to do that or demonstrate that, they use a portfolio model and in terms of growth, but it, it is not, oh, we have an IB classroom and a non-IB classroom. So I, I echo that sentiment in terms, in terms of models that you'll be able to see that are fully inclusive, we definitely see it more, or I've been able to see it more in the primary years and middle years. And then just because of, you know, the, the traditional aspect of, of, of certain high schools, even in Massachusetts. So where I went to Provincetown, they don't have a high school because they have a choice going all around. Well, all the surrounding communities will offer an IB, but they'll offer an IB class. They don't offer an IB program. So, or, or, you know, but they're doing, and you can sign up for that. And there's nothing, there's, ultimately, there's nothing wrong with that, especially if it provides a student a pathway or an avenue to explore things that they're passionate about. And so there, you'll see other schools, you know, especially in terms of high schools that are still able to offer AP, CTE on, and it's because of the way high schools tend to operate, it tends to go more on a course offering rather than a systemic piece, where you'll see that more in the primary and elementary years, moving to the middle school and then adapting at the high school model.
I asked, what school would you be doing the feasible study at to determine if it's a pathway we could take?
So. Did I hear you correctly, in which schools would I be looking at to determine whether it's feasible? So I actually have a, I have an ongoing conversation and a potential meeting, should we wish to learn more and explore more, if you're, if folks are intrigued by this. As potentially next Tuesday, I'll be meeting with a local representative, or excuse me, the regional representative for the IB who will be in Mystic, so not too far, so I'll be able to.
Our schools.
Oh, which one of our schools? I want all of them. I think all of them, I think that one would be get, one would beget the other. But in terms of, again, it would be about, it would be in terms of their readiness, I, I would need to hear from, I'd need that, for them to go through their self-study and, and how well-prepared they see themselves. Because I could be like, everybody's ready, but then the faculty and staff hear it and go, wait, what? We're not ready for that. And so now, do I expect that? No. But at the same time, or it could be, okay, well, if that school is going to get ready, so let's say it was the elementary schools, our elementary schools are going to get rolling. But then that price point comes in for, okay, to get X number of grade levels prepared with professional development, it's going to be $100,000. That might be a deterrent. And that, so, you know, it, it, where would I start? I would love for everybody to go on, go through this journey together. I think that ultimately. I think that ultimately, off the top of my head, it would be our secondary schools that would be the most prepared because of the different disciplines and required courses, not only here for graduation, but that we have in place already with the arts as well as with world languages being present already. That I think they're the most organically positioned, if I had to make, you know, take a guess. How, you know, fiscally or culturally ready they are, I think that they're ready. I wouldn't be proposing this across the district if I didn't think that we are already in the right place or moving towards the right place culturally. So I ultimately, I'd have to hear from, you know, I'd have to hear from the building principals in their in their teams to tell me how ready they think they are. But I know that I had given many opportunities across every administration and and none took the opportunity to say, yeah, no. So all were all were given the ample opportunity to voice concerns. And all felt that they, this was something that in terms of our core values and what they could get excited about and that spoke to those core values and what they do every day. They, that reverberated with them.
Michelle?
So I, you know, full disclosure, I've been dancing in the cardist of the administration building since Mr. Padraza suggested this. I I would, I would love to see this come to our district, but you know, I do sit on the strategic planning subcommittee, so I I have been wrestling with this for several weeks. Where where I am right now, personally and and school committee professionally, I would like to personally do a couple of things and one of them is to visit an IB school, which I am going to try to get that in the works in the next week or so. If things ever calm down in my outside life. I would also, and I assume all my fellow school committee members have seen this, but Mr. Padraza provided several links at the end of one of these documents on IB work. So I'm, I'm moving in the direction of reading some of those. It's just, I've fallen asleep reading them when I've tried. So I, it's on my, it's on, it's on my to do list. I, I, I don't know if we're ready to jump in. I, I would like, I know this is on the agenda as a discussion and action. I, I would like to suggest, and I don't know if Mr. Padraza and Chiavetta will agree with this, but I would like to suggest that perhaps we ask Mr. Padraza to continue to investigate for us. I don't know, you know, how much additional information you can, we can get other than what I just said, I plan on investigating, you know, trying to visit an IB school and also reading those documents. I do have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Padraza. It just, you may or may not have have gotten this far yet and and I'm fine with that. So if we do that initial program in in the fall of 27 and and we have, you know, I don't know how many schools ready or approved by the IB, we would pay just for those schools. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yes. So we would pay just for those schools. Additionally, we have just the right number of schools in order to qualify for a district or to qualify for a discount across all of the schools as long, as long as people are making progress along their plans. So you need, again, in in other areas of the country or even other districts, they have a lot more schools, their their threshold for a kind of a bulk discount, if you will, is five schools. And so if all five schools were to be undertaking this program, there would be a discount. I can't tell you what what that discount is at this time, but it is, it is one that was, and there are different, there are different costs for different programs.
They don't take coupons? Um, okay. So in other words, if we had, for example, two schools ready right now.
Yep.
We could start with those two schools as long as we are communicating with the IB.
Yes.
People that we are intending on bringing the other three schools along, we would qualify for that discount?
Yes.
All right.
So long as progress is being made. So for example,
Okay.
They they told me in the in the primary years that it's okay, that if, if, when you make your application, you you do not, if you didn't have world language, but you had a plan in place to phase it in over the next two to three years and then demonstrated progress on that plan, on on that commitment, that that would not hold up an endorsement.
Okay. And I think this might be my last question, but I'm not going to be held to that. If you don't mind. So I want to make sure that I understand this and I will be honest, I didn't bring all my notes from the strategic planning subcommittee meetings. But the the way I understand it, the professional development is provided to the principals first. And then the subsequent professional development. Do we ever reach a place with our professional development where our in-house people who have gone through the training can train other people in the district? And that's like a way out there question. So if that's something you need to look into, I'm, I'm fine with that. I know there are a lot of programs and and things that allow that. There's a name for it, but.
And the trainer model.
The trainer. You know, I was going to say train the trainer, but I thought I was wrong. I wrote train the trainer. Okay, I'm, 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 I'm in a place where I'm ready, but don't forget, people here at the table other than Mr. Shear. I've been going to all these strategic planning meetings and been listening to IB for several weeks now, but I am all for not approving IB for all tonight, but suggesting that we continue to look at the IB and make sure we've answered all the questions from the people here at the table. Also open the door so that our faculty can, you know, I know the building administrators have been, you know, keyed into it, but I'd like to see that opportunity for the faculty to come and ask questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James?
Thank you. So one thing that popped out and Ms. Brusso touched on it is professional development. I understand we don't have a lot of time to get professional development and we already have a lot of mandates from RIDE for particular, you know, even internal policies for particular trainings and whatnot. I'm just wondering how you would see this professional development fitting in? And how how would we incorporate that into an already stretched thin time period to provide professional development?
How do you know you talk too much at a meeting? You know, that would ultimately coming up with what that is would be, you know, would would be part of that, that feasibility study as well as then looking into options. Are there things that can be done on over the summer? Are there, are they all synchronous and in person or are they asynchronous? Would that would allow us flexibility with those components as well as, you know, continuing to take a look at how we're, how we're currently using time and and the school calendar and school schedules and could we make more professional development time? And that's the case regardless of whether it's IB for for all or not. But those would be some things that I would look into as well as Ms. Brusso, you know, learning or getting the answer to Ms. Brusso's question about the, you know, train the trainer being available, which I believe that it is. However, I don't know that we would qualify or someone would qualify without a certain requisite number of years actually implementing the model. So I believe it's, I believe it's available, but I believe that it's a certain number of years to get there. But that ultimately, we would have that be in-house because again, in, you know, having faculty and staff that are new retirees that we, it would be a constant, it's a constant iterative process and training process. So, you know, I I would need to take a look. Is it a cohort? You know, are we going, you know, is it a three-year plan that we're putting in place that would allow us to do a grade or two at a time if funds were limited? Is it one building? Is it three? Again, so I I share those concerns, but definitely would be regardless of this, would want to be looking at how we're using our time and operations to create more opportunities for professional development.
All right. So I also wanted to ask you, and forgive me if this is, you know, somewhat, you know, I haven't looked into all the documentation around IB. So it's kind of relatively new to me as far as what it entails. And so echoing concerns that we have at the DLI program where there was inequities and who is, you know, there's a lottery to get in, some students were in, some students were out. You mentioned in the diploma and career course tracks that there are programs, that there are certain courses that people can take. But what does that look like for the primary years? Like, what does that look like? Or even for the middle school years? Is it, is it something that's automatically available to everyone? It's just the way we teach or how does, what does that look like at those levels?
So what I'll do, if, because it sounds like there's interest in learning more, I I can prepare something in terms of what does, you know, try to do a day in the life or, you know, compare. In many cases, it might not look very different to what we're doing now. Depending on how certain curriculum is rolled out, what, you know, what I've seen is ultimately these big overarching interdisciplinary connections. That to me is what stands out in terms of the things that I've seen different occur differently. Exploring you and your place in the world, which I believe is actually one of the the kind of core questions of the IB that, okay, my place in the world, okay, what I'm reading about, what I'm writing about, what I'm learning about or when I'm watching the news. So regardless of whether it's ELA, science, the social studies, all that core question of me and my place in the world is 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 being looked at. And so I'm making connections across there. In in terms of then getting to the secondary levels in terms of then that level of proficiency of skill and knowledge is where I believe the testing components start, start coming in and being. Because originally, the IB is also set up for it and in some cases, families that move internationally as well as been in the military and want to make sure that their credentials and the classes that they go to are transferable across. And and so that was a a major, you know, driving factor of of those programs to make sure that whether I was here in the United States or then over in Germany, that my IB credits ultimately would carry over and be recognized and be recognizable, not just recognized.
It sounds like we can slot this into existing ways we teach. I was wondering how it reacts to, you know, if Ryan has a mandate on how on curriculum or something like that, how does that fit into that structure?
Yeah. So again, they're not going to say you need to locally generate your curriculum. They were, you know, or that you you need, you need to use, here's our published material, you have to adopt that. That it 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 works in terms of the one, if you're using wonders as your ELA curriculum and that's what you're doing and how you're implementing that aligns with their standards, then that, then that's approved. They wouldn't say, no, wonders isn't on our list, you can't do it.
And so, you know, finally, there's some comments about it. I, you know, I think it sounds like we're circling around the idea of a feasibility study, not really saying, we definitely want to move forward with this. I think there's a lot of information we still need before we could say, go for it. I I agree. I think it's a worthy goal. I think it's very ambitious. I think it is something worth studying and learning more about. So I, if we were going to vote on anything, I would be in favor of continuing with a feasibility study. But beyond that, I would need more information before saying, let's go forward and make this part of the strategic plan.
So I'm definitely intrigued. I do think this is something to look into. It it is the right fit for our school district. I too have a lot of questions. I'm not looking for answers tonight because I, when you say it, there's a lot of interest that we need more information. I think that's what I'm hearing too. The questions I have is, what is the data to support that the the IB program leads to better educational outcomes for students? An IB school versus non IB schools? I would like to see the data on that. I would like to make sure this is sustainable. One of the things that we've struggled with is how to schedule a foreign language in our elementary school day. I would need to see some scheduling information around that. You know, just to make sure if we do bring in something, it's not something we start and then two years later to say, no, we're not going to do this. That's not good for students, families, teachers. We've, we have unfortunately done that in the past and we don't want to do that. So I think we want to be mindful and careful. So I, at this point, I would like to have a workshop where we can dedicate a couple of hours to to getting more information. And perhaps people could let Mr. Seager and yourself know ahead of time if we come up with questions. That way we could have a very robust discussion. So that's what I would like to see. Thoughts on having a workshop, a future workshop?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
Can you, is the feasibility study a self-guided process or is that something we bring someone in to do for?
So a feasibility study would be, it's a, it's a self-guided process. So we would take the standards, take ultimately the application or what it need. You know, they give you indicators of what needs to be present in an application. And then you go through going, okay, this is in progress, this is absent, does this align? Again, the the main thing being is, you know, does, does the philosophy, does the vision resonate with what we want, what we're either doing or what we want to do is that core component. But again, IB also has those sustainability pieces as well. And so I'll need to get the specifics. So, you know, what what I'm potentially, or what I, what I could do is and come up. So I know in terms of what I've heard thus far is, you know, the fiscal impact, we've had lots of questions on that. The CTE component, I'll double check or make sure that I can report back on what each program's components are. Again, the fiscal sustainability, potential surrounding IB schools that are open to a visit. Find out more about the train, the trainer, what a quote unquote, what, I'll even do a grade level, potentially by grade level at each school. What the, you know, potential PD costs would be at each phase, as well as what the chair just mentioned in terms of scheduling at the elementary in terms of making sure that it's sustainable. So I can come back prepared to with a, a light district feasibility where, where, okay, from a maybe not a 10,000 foot view, but a 7,000 foot view from a district perspective, what I know or what has to be in place and where I think we are. And then what ultimately those inhibitors may or may not be, as well as try and come back with some, some cost estimates played out across a scenario or two.
Yes, Mike. My, I like the idea of the workshop more dedicated to just this subject because I think it is a huge change for the entire district. But I think to really make that a useful workshop, that it might make sense to do the feasibility study first because it's going to unearth a lot of the answers to the questions we have. Until you've done a complete study, are you really going to know the fiscal impact? Because you're, you know, until we really look and see, here's where we're far away from the standard. Here's where we're close. We're not really going to have financial numbers. We're not going to know who do we need to hire or who needs to be trained until we have a complete picture. So if we go to a workshop and then say, now do a feasibility study, then we're coming back again to say, what are the results of that? To get a clearer picture.
My idea for the workshop though is to get more information of, do we even want to do the feasibility study? To learn about the, I mean, you've, you've probably know more than I do because you've been involved. But I'm looking at this references and additional resources. I would like to go out and visit these websites. I would like to pull these, I'm assuming they're peer-reviewed papers and take a look at them. And then come back at a workshop setting with more of those questions. I just think this is a heavy lift. It's worth exploring definitely. But I think, I think we need more opportunities before we move on to the feasibility study. That's just where I'm at. And I know you're, you're further ahead than me.
I, it's a workshop, not a retreat, right? So that's good.
Bring, bring your swimsuit there, Stuart.
There you go. You don't want to see that. So I like the idea of a workshop. I would like to have a clear-cut agenda put together for what we really want to have unearthed in that, in that type of a workshop. I would love to have a subject matter expert, somebody already who maybe is engaged with that to be there to help answer some of the questions from their point of view of implementation? And what were some of their barriers to overcome and things like that and costs? It'd probably also be a good idea that who that person might be would be where maybe looking as a group, where would we want to earmark this for? And have that type of a subject, like bring somebody from a school who has implemented for that, for that grade. As opposed to somebody if we're thinking, well, let's implement the high school, but they come in for the grade schools, right? So have somebody who's, you know, or just bring somebody from IB, I guess, to answer all of that. So that would be some of the things I'd like to see before we set a date.
Now that those are great suggestions. And again, you know, if things come to you later, we can always email them to the superintendent, Paula.
And I would just like to say, you know, I, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, we have, we've had the equity. We, we're doing a strategic, we've actually approved that a few strategic plan tonight. However, we have been chugging down this road of trying to get an equitable education system going here and self-consent for our schools, for our students. And I just can't see us at this point trying to implement something else that would potentially just, I don't know, from my perspective, I can just see an overwhelming transition for our students and family. And, you know, I just think we're moving ahead a little bit too fast. We're trying to implement a new system. And I think that we still have a lot of work to get the system that we currently have up and running and moving full steam ahead and filling those achievement gaps. Where we stand right now, not that I'm against it, I just think that, you know, from where I come from, where we're at now and where we're trying to go is still, we're still far from that. And for us to implement right now, something new, I just think that the transition can be overwhelming for students, for families, and potentially even for educators.
Yeah, I, I hear you. We don't want to take on too much all at once. But I do think that getting more information would be very helpful. So I think this has been a very good discussion and we will come back at a very, you know, then the next month or so with it on the future agenda with more time to get some of these questions answered. And for Mr. Pedraza to look at what other resources maybe he could present at that kind of workshop. So, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Actually, I am going to, is your one? I was going to open up a public comment again, just in case anybody wants to come to the podium and say anything.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You guys are very efficient. So I was 10 minutes late and was done. So I just had some questions about an upcoming agenda item. It was the materials opt-out form. And so I know that there's a lot of gray with this ruling. So some of the questions that I had that I'd like to be considered is with the opt-out form, how are we planning to support teachers so that they don't decide to, to opt out of more inclusive curriculum materials? Teachers who might feel like, you know, I just don't want to deal with this reporting or figuring out what, where this material falls down on. So I'll just skip it. The next question is how are older students who may be looking for support served? How would this affect counseling? Children who are 12, 13, 14, who might have questions for themselves that maybe their families don't support? How are we going to serve those students? Is there a metric for deciphering sincere religious concerns versus political opposition? And then are these opt-out? You know, are our families looking at a case-by-case opt-out? Or is it a blanket opt-out? And how is that defined? So I don't know if, those are just questions that I jotted down. And I'm on the policy subcommittee and I know we discussed it and Mr. Pedraza, I appreciate your response to my email. But I know this is just a tough, I know it's not necessarily in totally your control. I know that. I'm just wondering how we can make sure we're supporting all of our students. And I'm just afraid this might open up a door to, you know, I'm against evolution. Like how, how does that affect? And actually I know that it, it doesn't cover the curriculum. I'm just concerned about how families and staff will interpret this. So thank you so much. I really appreciate.
Thank you for coming and for your question. It is an agenda item. We purposefully put it on the agenda so that we could have this discussion and clarify and hopefully answer your question. And can I get your name again to the record?
Sorry. It's Caterie Collins.
Caterie Collins. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. I really appreciate you opening it up.
Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Okay. So with that, we will close public comment again.
So I have just one more comment on the IB before we move on to the next agenda item. Actually, a comment and a question. I, I would, I would need like more information on how the whole interdisciplinary aspect of this is handled. You know, our elementary school teachers do a phenomenal job with weaving subjects together. But being a former high school teacher, you know, I can't, I can't fathom weaving English into my quadratic lesson. So like, I'm, I'm assuming that comes out of the the professional development, but I would like some more information on that. And, um, Mr. Pedraza, do we need to take action to allow you to continue to move forward with exploration? No? Okay. Just want to make sure we're not tying your hands.
No, if there was something specifically in terms of that you would like to see, you know, again, between this, you can let me know if there are certain aspects that you would like me to do. But if all of a sudden there were a report or by a certain date or, you know, a certain set of steps that you would like me to take, that, that's a whole other, that would be a conversation. You know, but in terms of, hey, continue the exploration. We'll email you questions as they come to us as we explore is, is guidance. The appetite to continue the conversation right now is, is guidance enough for me right now? I'll continue to, to, to do all, to continue to do what I've, what this initial exploration, bring that back to you. And then should, and do that kind of 10,000-foot district readiness of where, where we are. You know, and should a workshop be in the best interest of everybody's time and, and resources? I'll bring, we'll, we'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's going to bring us to the next item, C, discussion, state testing ELA and math results. Oh, it's over to Mr. Seeger.
Yes, yes, indeed. And if we can bring up the presentation, please?
And then the earth cooled.
Yes, indeed. Yeah. The, the true reason why we're all gathered here this evening for the 29th slide ELA and math state testing results presentation. And, you know, all, all joking aside, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the school committee, and thank you, Mr. Pedraza and members of the public for your patience in advance. I do promise to insert brevity wherever possible in order to keep our agenda rolling this evening. So, so thank you. And with that, you know, just a, a, a quick run-through as it relates to the goal of this evening's presentation. You know, so, you know, what you will see this evening is certainly a bevy of public-facing data sets that reflect our district performance. But I am excited truly to be presenting this in terms of what quickly became this evening, the baseline in many respects for our strategic plan. And, you know, as we think about our, our KPIs, our key performance indicators, as we move through this five-year plan, I'm excited to share where we are, you know, off the bat as we think about our 2025 test results as it relates to priority one, ensure proficiency rates increase for all students and that we are working to eliminate those achievement and opportunity gaps through high expectations and equity. So again, thinking about these results in that context, I think is all the more impactful as we, as we unpack this data. Next slide, please. So in the spirit of a, a former colleague of ours who used to, you know, lead with the bottom line upfront, if you will. So we did call attention to five key highlights that stood out certainly as an administrative team as we started to look deeper into our RICAS results over the last couple of weeks since their, their public release and, and release to us as well. And I would say just a, a note that these highlights capture the work done across all five of our schools. And so, you know, the, the kudos and congratulations where applicable certainly lie with our faculty, staff and our, our building-level administrators, as well as our central office support staff or, you know, for all of their hard work that went into the metrics that you see here. So I will not read this slide to you, but I will certainly call attention to, you know, a number of key pieces here. I know earlier this evening, the topic came up with respect to school attendance. And leading with star number five on the slide there, we see that South Kingstown High School, special shout out, one of only five schools across the state that, that are deemed in the 555 club, the prestigious, you know, at least minimum plus 5% gains in math, ELA, and, and the reduction of chronic absenteeism attendance rates. So, you know, there's certainly a lot to celebrate as it relates to the work done at, at South Kingstown High School as well as Broad Rock and our elementary schools as reflected in this slide. With that, next slide, please. So I know that all those in attendance and for anyone watching at home, you might be eager to follow along and recreate this presentation. And the good news is for all of you, this is again, public-facing data. So here are some easy instructions for you to go to the public assessment data portal. And then following the screenshots and directions, you would be able to drill down and see those results for yourself in real time or at your own leisure. Next slide, please. So we begin the data viewing portion with looking at our RICAS ELA scores, which reflect students in grades three to eight. And this is again, 24, 25 school year, so not this current school year. Next slide, please. So I'm going to spend just a few extra seconds on the first slide, just to call out. Mr. Pedraza and I were talking earlier today about how we, we are frequently looking at these types of screenshots, given that this is how our status assessment results are, are provided to us. But that might not reflect everybody's experience. And so we know that this might be a first viewing of this kind of screenshot for a number of folks. So just a couple of helpful tips. If you look typically at the bottom rows, that's where you would see the most recent assessment results data captured. And then if you follow across those column headers, the, the metrics that we have paid very close and careful attention to are our growth percentile data, our average growth percentile number, our number of students meeting or percent of students meeting or exceeding grade level expectation. grade level expectations. And then finally, our average scaled score. Those are really the those key metrics that we that we drill down on. So here you see in in terms of district wide ELA, I'm happy to report that as we look across the three most recent years of testing, that we realized increases across all four of those key metrics. As noted, that growth, average growth percentile, meeting and exceeding and scaled score. Next slide, please. So again, thinking about the work that we we have discussed, not only earlier this evening, but certainly stemming from our needs assessment, which is our equity audit. We did take a look at some specific student groups. And so thinking about district wide, our students who are economically disadvantaged, we are able to see some some real impressive gains across all of those four key categories that we noted earlier. So that is something that that jumped out at us and we are are certainly celebrating here early as we are setting our baseline. Next slide, please. Similarly, our students who receive special education services, we saw increases across all of those same categories. And again, you can track that progress over the course of the the previous three testing periods. So again, I want to, again, kudos to the the many hands that contributed to the growth that we've seen in terms of the performance of our students who receive special education services. Next slide, please. And just a word of note about the next slide with respect to our various racial and ethnic groups. In an effort to spare everyone's eyesight, we were only able to include the previous two years. But again, if you're following along, you can you can drill down in each of these cat, these student groups further across, you know, longitudinal span of time. So what we did see in in this slide, following along with the theme from previous slides is some significant increases across a number of different student groups represented here, including American Indian, Asian, Hispanic or Latino, two or more races. And just a note as it relates to black or African American students, we're unable to disclose that due to the cohort and size being below 20. So whenever you see that asterisk, that means that, you know, we run the risk of some personally identifiable data. And so that is not part of the public facing reporting. Next slide, please. So shifting gears, we are moving into our RICAS math, again reflective of grades three to eight. Next slide, please. So again, following along a similar trend we've seen, I'm happy to report that we had an increase in a number of categories and growth, a number of meeting and exceeding, as well as our average scaled score for RICAS math across across the grades. Next slide, please. And in terms of our socioeconomic group, we had an increase in our average growth percentile, the percent meeting and exceeding, as well as our scaled score. So again, we are a lot to celebrate here this evening. Next slide, please. Once again, district wide for math, for students receiving special education services and increase across all of the metrics, as noted. Next slide, please. And then in terms of our racial and ethnic student group breakdown, you can see that we did have areas where our our data increased. According to the metrics here, we did have some, for example, with our American Indian population, we did have our scaled scores stay static for for this time. But again, we are able to see growth across a number of racial and ethnic groups. Next slide, please. So drilling down a little bit further, and we are about halfway through, folks. So you're doing a nice job of hanging in there. So we are going to just take a little peek under the hood here as it relates to by grade level across ELA and math. Next slide, please. So district wide, in terms of our grade three performance in both ELA and math, happy to report that we had an increase in all of those four key areas that we talked about. And just a word of note, as we think about grade three, you'll note that there is no growth captured here, given that there is no testing in grade two. So this is the first year of testing for grade three. So really, we're talking about, if you remember last year, we had a presentation where we talked about, you know, apples to apples, apples to oranges. So the, we're looking at different cohorts represented here. But again, happy to report the increase in the areas as outlined on this slide. Next slide, please. So district wide, by grade for grade four, we did see an increase across those those noted metric areas in ELA. We did see a decrease across those categories in math, which were as a district, we have begun to, you know, dive much deeper into the the metrics here. And fortunately, something I I am happy about this year is we we've seen the return of the released items for RICAS. So if you recall, last year, we were not privy to the actual questions that appeared on RICAS. Those have returned this year. So we we clearly have some, you know, exploration to do as it relates to, you know, what what were those questions? And where do we have opportunities to potentially, you know, address what we see in the data here? Next slide, please. District wide, grade five ELA and math. Again, keeping with the the previous trend here, we see an increase across all the categories in math with a mixed bag, some some variation with respect to grade five math performance where we see our some areas going down and remaining static and others. Next slide, please. And district wide for grade six in ELA and math, we did see a slight decrease across a number of metric areas in in ELA. And in math, we did see some areas where we went down and some areas where we stayed the same, in particular, our scaled score, average scaled score. Next slide, please. And for grade seven, I'm pleased to report that we had, you know, increases across all categories in both ELA and math. So again, in that bottom line upfront slide, grade seven was certainly, you know, one of those, one of those grade levels that stood out in our analysis of the data. So again, we appreciate the work done by by the team reflected in that in in that data. Next slide, please. And finally, for grade eight, we do see for for ELA that we did have some variation in terms of our performance where we saw our growth and average growth percentile increase. And our percent of meeting and exceeding in our average scaled score decrease. And in terms of math, we saw something something similar in terms of the increase in growth while our meeting and exceeding had a slight decrease. So next slide, please. All right. And skipping from grade eight, moving up to the PSAT and ELA and math in grade 10. And as you, as you certainly recall, there is no state testing at grade nine. So with that, next slide, please. So you do see once again, similar to grade three, you know, we have no growth data represented here, given that there is no testing. And would also put the PSAT data into context as it relates to longitudinal examination. So it has only been two years since the PSAT did have a shift in its format where it became all online adaptive test model. So when we do look at the data, we look in particular at 2324, and now we have data point two in that triangulation, if you will, as it relates to the new format of the test. But with that, we did see again, that apples and apples to oranges comparison, that ELA, we had the percent of meeting and exceeding increase for ELA. And we did see in math that our average scaled score did increase. Next slide, please. All right. And rounding out the presentation, we are at grade 11, the SAT, the the last of the state assessments, if you will. Next slide, please. So fortunately, for the SAT, we're able to get all of our metrics returned. And again, similar case with the SAT as it relates to the format of the test being having two data sets now at this point in time. So as it relates to the SAT, I'm pleased to report that we we once again saw that trend of an increase across all areas for ELA with the growth, our average growth percentile, percent meeting and exceeding in our scaled score. Now, in math, we also had our percent of meeting and exceeding, as well as our average scaled score increase. So, you know, with that, I will go to the next slide, please, and take a closer look at our our student groups here. So again, keeping with the trend that we've seen, with regard to our economically disadvantaged students, our socioeconomic group, we did see increases across all metrics in both subjects, ELA and math. So again, much to celebrate and again, reflective of the incredible efforts being done, you know, at the building level, you know, at the teacher and student level to to promote this level of growth. And next slide, please. And in terms of our students who receive special education services in ELA, we saw the percent of students meeting and exceeding, as well as the average scaled score increase. And in terms of math, we saw once again, that increase across all metrics. So again, a lot to celebrate. And with that, next slide, please. So this should look familiar to you. This is our our bottom line upfront returned again. And again, I I do want to say thank you for your patience as we move through the the multitude of data sets. And again, I I do want to give another thank you to our entire faculty, staff and administration for all of their efforts as it relates to contributing to the many data points that we're celebrating here this evening. Certainly, our work is only just beginning as it relates to the next five years, if we're thinking about where this fits as it relates to the strategic plan and our key performance indicators. But certainly, you know, we are starting off in in the right step in terms of advancing learning here in South Kingstown. And with that, next slide, please. And I did want to also note that Ride was what did stand behind their promise to go live with the family portal for RICAS data, which was launched this past Friday. And on this slide here, we have included specific directions in order to start your own account as a family member. And I do want to give a special thank you to to Mr. Snow, his team, Ms. Thibodeau, Mr. Lonigan, for creating the helpful one pager guides for our families, as well as the helpful YouTube video in terms of being able to access this data. So what again, when we think about our family members as as bookends and partners in our work, it would behoove our families to to go ahead and if possible, you know, create that account, especially if you have a student who's engaging in RICAS, a child, I should say, who's engaging in RICAS. I'm certainly our students in grades four through grade nine and beyond, you know, you would be able to sign on and have robust data from from many years related to RICAS testing. So again, a nice helpful peek under the hood. So again, with that, again, thank you to our tech team for the helpful support there. And with that, next slide, please. And at this point, I am pleased to stop talking and entertain any and all questions, comments, concerns, or anything else for the good of the order that you might have for yours truly. Thank you.
So that was the shortest 29 slides I've been through. Well done. Your mic didn't go out, so that's a good indicator. So, yeah, it looks like nice data. And so my question is, like, what changed? What are you actually attributing these numbers to?
Excellent question. And I would say that, you know, Mr. Pedraza and I, as well as the the district level team, you know, we've had similar questions. I think as we've only had less than two weeks, for those of you counting at home, to to really dive into this data. At this point, you know, we are looking at this in terms of what we might see as as data that contributes or correlates to to what we've seen in the metrics here. I don't think we're we're quite at that point of saying that we can draw that straight line and and develop that causal relationship. But I can, I can certainly say, you know, with emphasis and with sincerity is that based on what I've seen in my extremely brief tenure here in South Kingstown as Assistant Superintendent, as as we've seen outlined in the equity audit and where we found commendation is that we have an amazing collection of adults who care deeply about the future of our students and who are in this work for the right reasons and who work tirelessly to advance growth and to promote achievement. And so my my quick response to you would be, you know, what we are doing is is moving students in the right direction as it relates to that growth and achievement. And so that's reflective of not only that direct teaching and learning relationship between and amongst students and teachers, but the the various, you know, systems of support that have hopefully contribute to that all the way up through, you know, professional development and through certainly the the leadership that we get from the school and town level and the school committee levels. That's my best guess as I sit here.
Yeah, could be also just attendance as well has helped support that, even that we've seen an increase in the attendance as well, right? I guess the only other follow up question is how would I be change, maybe that's something to put on to the agenda, how that might impact this differently if we're already starting to see an increase in in achievement? You know, is that an accelerated thing? Or are we on a, to Paul's, I guess, you know, commentary? Are we on the right track?
Yeah. Yeah, indeed. And I would say I'm I'm remiss in not mentioning that, you know, the 555 Club element, which is, you know, well, well deserved. And to your point, you know, that that seismic shift in our in our attendance data in the right direction has only contributed positively to what we've seen.
And ultimately, I think our next step is I'm very pleased that this came out at the beginning of October, albeit unexpectedly. But our job now is to get to that systems and structure in terms of how do we get this data in front of in front of teachers and in making sure that they're able to see their students, not only from last year, but the students who are in front of them this year and able to to do those temperature checks. So, you know, while here we're doing that apples to oranges, our our the real work and the heavy lift starts coming when we do the apples to apples and making sure our faculty and staff have what they need in order to to make this more than data, to make this faculty and staff have what they need in order to to make this more than data, to make this, you know, what's going to be driving, driving teaching and learning in in terms of what's needed moving forward. So, and I know our principals are doing that work already, so.
I think there's some very positive direction here, so I'm happy to see that. We don't always see that. I have questions just to make sure I understand how the data is presented. Because when we're looking at, say, three years of the same grade data, we're looking at three different groups of students. When we are looking at the growth percentile, is that comparing the same students to themselves? Is that correct? So we're looking, I so I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. So a fourth grade student class, you've got a, that growth percentile is comparing to the previous third grade class.
So the growth percentile is an apples to apples comparison. So the great hence in grade three, you don't see any growth because they haven't, they don't have a year, they don't have any prior data. The next year or this year, when grade, last year's grade three is now in grade four, they will have growth data and it is unique to their cohort and to their group. Not that comparison, not compared to the growth of the cohort previously. We're making those comparisons here, but that growth percentile is based off of that cohort, not compared to the previous year's cohort.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. And then it looks to me like when we get to PSAT and SAT that our students seem to excel more in ELA and maybe compared to RIDEcast and and maybe fall behind a little bit in math compared to RIDEcast. I don't know if I'm, if it's a huge number, but it, at least these numbers seem that way. And I don't know if there's something you know about those tests that's different? Or is is it a difference in the format is, but or and is that consistent through the years?
It's tough to say with the test being revised and now we have the first time of two data points on the same type of test, again, that that adaptive piece. I will note that potentially in a in the next meeting, in terms of attendance and really has a a dramatic swing in terms of PSAT and SAT, potentially because we're talking about just, you know, two unique cohorts that are going in. We're talk really with PSAT, we're trying to measure since eighth grade, but using a a different scale. So they are different com- components, but we're we're looking, we're looking into that. Again, and we also need to do that apples to apples comparison with that cohort. What did that, what was that cohort doing in eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, and what are their experiences? So that's what we're digging into now.
Is the SAT and the PSAT still based on a score of a hundred, of eight hundred?
That's an excellent question. We will follow up with the revised, if applicable, revised metrics as it relates to reporting.
And so I understand that the the PSAT and the SAT has been moved to online and adaptive. Can you give me some additional background on adaptive?
That's an excellent question. And I think to to boil it down, my understanding is there are two different portions of the test. And essentially, how you answer questions in the first portion of the test then influences directly the questions that you see and the rigor of the questions that you potentially encounter in part two of the test. So it is adaptive in real time and to very quickly compare that with with RIDEcast, nonadaptive. So the questions are the questions that you encounter.
Additionally, they they have a certain number of questions that they rank as easy, moderate, difficult. And essentially, what they're, what they try to do is they now score them to eliminate guessing where in the past SATs and PSATs, you were encouraged to guess. Essentially, in these adaptive platforms, they are eliminating guessing. So if you got, let's say, there were five easy questions and you got them all wrong, and there were three hard questions and you got one of them right, it would, it might not mark that hard question as as correct because you didn't get the easy ones correct.
Might have guessed.
As you might have guessed. And so then it would offer a different array of questions to to get more data about those, about those, about about those questions and the and the level of rigor. So for some reason, I'm just.
Okay, so so I wanted to, I I thought that's what was meant by adaptive, but I wanted to be sure. The, do we have released items on the SAT and the PSAT for last year or no?
Excellent question. I have not encountered the actual released items for SAT and PSAT, but I do know that there are an abundance of practice questions that are released, but. I I don't believe we're able to engage in the same level of item analysis that we are for RIDEcast.
Yes, okay. So the released items that we get, sorry, guys, I have pages of questions. The released items that we get for the RIDEcast. So can you just give us some details on those? And what I'm looking for is, and this is how the SAT, the the paper and pencil version of the SAT used to be, that you could pay extra when you took the SAT to get released items, but it would be your task. So you would know which ones you got because the SAT, some students back in the dark ages took it more than once to improve their score. So you the released items, you could, like I said, pay extra certain months of the year. And I know this is how it used to be done to get your task back. So you could see, you know, I got all the algebra questions correct, but I got the data statistics and probability questions, all of them wrong and and so forth. So the released items that we get from the RIDEcast, are those just general released items or are those specific that, you know, I can see the released items from my test?
Yep, my understanding is the latter. So you are able to see in your individual student report for RIDEcast, ELA and math, where, how you answered the specific questions. And again, I I would also caution that not all questions are released. So there's only a certain collection of questions that are released. And so you would be able to pursue those and look those up via the assessment data portal where applicable.
Okay.
And just, oh, sorry. I was going to say, we we did get confirmation that sixteen hundred remains the top SAT score, that would be a score of eight hundred, top score of eight hundred in each of the tested subjects. Two hundred to eight hundred is the.
Yeah, I know. I know you get two hundred points on each section if you put your name on it. The, thank you for looking that up so that they've done away with the writing portion of the SAT. Sorry, I've been living this a few years more than you.
So I can certainly get you, I can follow up with a full survey as it relates to, you know, what types of questions. But in terms of, you know, that the old fashioned, you know, the blue book component of write your essay until till your pencil runs out of out of lead, you know, that has, that has gone.
That, okay, that's, that's what I was looking for. So my, I promise, this is the last question for tonight on this subject. So the raw scores that you see, I'm going to ask you the same question on the RIDEcast that I asked you on the SAT and the PSAT. So those, like, the scale score that we see in that last column, do you, where's the, where's the high?
Excellent question. So we have a range of anywhere from four forty up through five sixty. That is your scaled score range. And in particular, your cut scores for the four categories, those color-coded categories, four forty to four seventy would be not meeting. Four seventy to five hundred, or I should say, four seventy-one to to five hundred would be partially meeting. Five oh one to five thirty would be meeting, then five thirty to five sixty would be exceeding. So that should give you an idea of the.
That takes, that takes care of my question. Thank you, Mr. Seeger, and I am sorry for putting you on the spot for the last.
No worries. I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability this evening. So thank you.
I don't have any specific questions per se, but I do, I I do think these results are encouraging. I think it's it's great to see that growth in the scores. It's great to see moving into some folks in certain cohorts or certain groups going from not exceeding or, you know, not having the, any of the exceeding numbers, and now we have exceeding numbers. So it's great to see the growth, but there's certainly is a lot of work to do. And, you know, I I definitely want to have praise words due, but also recognize that there is still work to be done, especially with some of these groups that are showing lots of red in their bars. I I think there's, there's lots of work to do. I just want to recognize that fact that there's, there's a lot of work to be done. But this is overall encouraging in in direction to be moving in as a district, so I'm really, really happy to see that.
So I just have a quick question. Will you presenting more on this, particularly what you call apples to apples when we look at, when we can follow a cohort from year to year to year and see how well they've done? I think that's important to know.
So, you know, our plan is, as we continue to, you know, dive into these results, I would be delighted to return and and provide that similar format as last year of looking at some of that cohort data as we continue to to see that reflected in our analysis. So absolutely.
I think that would be important for us to see that data as well. But thank you for the presentation tonight is is very insightful, very encouraging. I think a lot of good news. I am concerned about fourth grade math. There, no matter which year you're looking at, is a huge drop off from third grade. So I think there's something to be looked into, deciphered with what's going on there. But I know these are just, you've only got these for two weeks, so not going to expect any answers tonight. But I think overall, it's very encouraging and I just want to say a shout out to all the this, the teachers and and the the TAs and everybody working with our students. I think, you know, it's very encouraging how, while these students are doing, even if it's just a half percent or percentage increase, it's moving in the right direction and it shows a lot of hard work. So just want to thank you all.
And the the one aspect of our inhibitor of that apples to, that apples to apples comparison is not having released items and making, and seeing how test construction potentially changed because ultimately we're mapping to standards and we're trying to then go, all right, are there? So for example, are the constructed responses within the same, which is traditionally lower? So for the constructed responses are the part one, part two writing out, it's not just the select the right answer, next question, it's their multi-step. Are those in the same, and traditionally, those are the lowest where we see the decline in performance. It's just multi steps. You get the first step wrong, the next part isn't going to match up, the next part. So seeing where those were and mapping the, we can't map them to the questions yet. We have to map them to the standard and is the standard new to that grade's cohort? So what what's ultimately our, the real question is for, is between third and fourth grade is what was new to the fourth grade in terms of content being taught? And how much was that assessed on this test? And so that just takes a little bit more time than years past because we can't just compare questions, we have to compare standards. So we'll get it done. It just, that'll be the, that's a little decelerant.
No, I know. It's it's, it takes a lot to look into causality of these things a lot. Also, in these, in the years we're looking at, where does there any methodology changes so that you have, you know, there might have been a falloff, but that's because they changed the way that they they tested. And so you've got students unfamiliar with the the type of tests they're taking. Yes, maybe.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, we 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 stand in agreement with that sentiment as it relates to, you know, where where there might be variations. And, you know, just again, we, while we do look forward to continuing to add some more context to those scores and to look at those cohort pieces, you know, we, we also, you know, can't overlook the the implementation of new curricula. And so as we think about, you know, last year in our elementary schools, we had year one of implementation of our new, you know, high-quality curriculum materials in Eureka Math Squared. So again, you know, while not drawing that direct line, you know, but also part of the overall context and just, you know, lending to your point.
Great, yeah, it's that kind of information that that you've got to have the context behind the numbers, correct? Right? All right. Well, thank you. Again, overall, very encouraging. That will bring us to our next discussion, October first enrollment. Back to you guys.
Thank you. So I believe we were going to call this up for those playing along at home. Essentially, I have submitted to the general public on board docs as well as to this committee a memo regarding the October first enrollment data. So you have the memo that highlights some of the aspects of the data in the in the the following, that was presented in chart form. What I want to do is if you have the the color-coded, the blue and yellow chart, what I would just, what I attempted to do here was, and spoke to this in the memo, was show, much like our the presentation we just had, is not just a comparison, so kindergarten enrollment last year versus kindergarten enrollment this year, but also what happened to that kindergarten class when they went into first grade this year and were there any changes? So if you have that chart in front of you, essentially, and if you start at the very top is the elementary schools. So we have Mattoonik. Essentially, if we go across that, we see the enrollment last year in kindergarten Mattoonik was thirty-six students. On October first this year, we have thirty-nine students. Obvious, the next column, obviously, that's a delta of an additional three students in kindergarten comparisons. If we then go to grade one and go across, essentially, we, last year, we had thirty-three students in grade one at Mattoonik. This year, we have thirty-eight, which again is a delta of plus five in a grade one to grade one comparison. But what we also see and what I attempted to do is originally, that cohort, which was kindergarten last year of thirty-six, is now a cohort of thirty-eight. And so then that's the furthest column to the right, the cohort change. And so I won't take everybody through all of these. But there is some encouraging components here. There's also some things that we would like to see better or like to see change, but may or may not be under our locus of control. So our total in district residency stands at two thousand one hundred and seventy-three students, which is a decline over all of thirty-two students from last. over all of thirty-two students from last school year. And this was anticipated, hence some of the teaching positions that, and support positions that got eliminated or reduced. It, I do want to note, and I brought this up, I think, in my last presentation, is that we are currently exceeding the NESDEC predictions for this current school year that were made last year, which is why as we start talking about FY twenty-seven, that we need to always make sure that we have that, that, that buffer. Because what is projected by NESDEC doesn't necessarily always come to fruition. As such, our K through five enrollment is twenty-one above the NESDEC projection. Our middle school is nine above, and our high school is thirteen above those projections. And those matter, because again, each one of those students is someone who needs a seat every single period or needs a teacher in front of them, and we do have our contractual and moral obligations that we need to go through. I will say that I'm very encouraged by this cohort's stability. With the exception, obviously, or not, maybe not obviously, but that anticipated change from grade eight to grade nine. We do see the largest loss of a cohort, but generally that's except or expected as students go on to private schools or other avenues that they wish to pursue, whether that be for academics or athletics or for CTE programming. So again, that, that stability to me indicates that again, once families and students are with us, or the more that they're with us, the more likely that they are to stay with us, which is again a, a, a good indicator. Now, contrary to that a little bit is that we do see a slight increase, and I will need to say that I do need to rerun our CTE in totals for our district amount, as I believe I may have had a filter on that kept out too many students, and so I need to rerun those numbers. So my apologies in advance. But overall, in terms of not just the students that we have in district that we're responsible for, but also those who are out of district. Currently, compared to last year, we have nine left, we have, or excuse me, we have five students enrolled in a GED program. That is down from nine, or fourteen last year. We still have nine students in the transition program. Again, that is age and IEP-based. In terms of out of district for special ed, we have an increase of three students who are out of district. Out of district has declined by fourteen. That's services only. So that is students who go to private school, but their IEP still calls for services, of which we provide those services. That has gone down by fourteen. We have one less out of district CTE student this year compared to the end of the last school year. We have nine more students in an out-of-district charter, and our out-of-district state school increased by seven this year, most notably to the Met that has opened a satellite campus. So ultimately, our, those numbers plus our in-district residency gives us the two thousand four hundred and seventy-one students, of which we, in either entirety or in some way, shape or form, impact or are responsible for their education. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you may have, that I, or that I may or may not be able to answer.
Is there any impact on transportation costs as a result of this?
We have, I believe our transportation costs have stayed the same. We have not increased our, our busing fleet from last school year.
I think the numbers are encouraging, and especially ninth grade, eleven students. Fewer, I assume, many of them going to CTE programs is still about half of the number that normally goes out of district for CTE programs. So that's, should be a significant savings in those expenses. Part of that is just a smaller cohort. So as a percentage of those going out, somewhat lower, but that should result in some savings in out-of-district CTE expenses. And if we can replicate that over a few years, we should have a much smaller number going into district.
I just want to piggyback on that too, because losing only the eleven students from eighth to ninth grade, plus overall only seven students less at the high school is really low numbers when you consider that the Met opened a whole new program right in Wakefield. So I'm very encouraged that we're retaining more of our students at the high school level. And I think the new building will encourage more students to stay. So it is ver- very, very exciting to see these numbers. Anybody have any questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, just one last quick one. Homeschool. So we can get that number for you. It depends on whether, well, we, we didn't put it on here because we also, we have October one versus October one, but then we also have the end of last school year compared to right now, just like our, which historically has changed as the school year goes on, whether that be homeschool families who still haven't gotten us the paperwork and things that they need to, or if they're people choosing to exit the school system. So we'll present both of those numbers next, next meeting, so that we know where we're at in comparison to both end of year and same time of year, the best, the best that we can. And I'll present those with the revised CTE numbers in my report next, or in two weeks.
Just a quick question, because I know in the past, some families have put in for homeschooling, and then they think they only have to do it the one time. When they don't, they have to do that every year. Is there follow-up to make sure that they know that? Because in the past, there hasn't always been, and we lose track of it because we never want to do that.
Yeah, the answer to that question, excuse me, is yes. So Ms. Court has been working diligently at communicating with our homeschool families and ensuring that they are aware not only of our updated policy, but just that, that annual refresh on the letter of intent, you know, homeschool registration process. Thank you. We double dipped last year with the policy change and then with it follow-up communications if we haven't heard from people yet.
That's good. I mean, not to be intrusive to, to families and students, but we do want to know where students are, and I think that's important. So thank you for the follow-up on that. All right, so thank you. Those, again, very encouraging. They'll bring us to the next item. E, discussion action, instructional materials opt-out. So since this was talked at, at policy, I'm gonna ask James to explain how policy looked at this. And and did you have conversations with the attorneys regarding this as well?
Had some back and forth with, with attorneys on this, but as far as what was discussed in policy, it, it, we had a robust discussion about the decision, Mahmoud versus Taylor. We came to the decision as a subcommittee that the current instructional material opt-out on the books was sufficient to cover us because the, you know, it came, what, what we decided is that the the, what they were deciding in the Mahmoud case was that there was no opt-out for the school that was being sued. And we have an opt-out, so we're already, you know, at the policy level, we already felt like we're in compliance with with that policy, with that decision. But obviously, since then, there was a communication went out from administration regarding an opt-out form. And, you know, for that piece of it, I would like to, you know, turn it over to Mr. Brajaza to speak on that. We did have some emails from the community regarding that communication. So like for admin to, to talk about that.
So from a policy standpoint, we have an op, so what, what's important to note is that in Mahmoud versus Taylor, they had an opt-out policy that they then changed and then changed again. And so we have an opt-out policy that in, in order to meet Rhode Island general law that talked about, or talks about opting out of family and developmental health specifically. So we have an opt-out policy. So families in a, in concurrence with state law are allowed to opt-out. We have a policy in place. So ultimately, changing our existing policy in order to work in a specific reference to Mahmoud versus Taylor was deemed to be not necessary in that we can operationalize the opt-outs that are required now by, that are required by law for us to have that we can operate. We don't need to change the policy to include that, that we can operationalize that opt-out. And that's ultimately what happened. So we operationalized the Mahmoud-Taylor based off of the guidance of not only local district council and their advice to all of their clients, but also then on September twenty-fifth, the Department of Education, the commissioner did issue a Dear Colleague Letter to all districts across the state of which our opt-out policy or, and operations do fall in line with. We took the additional precautions, or what we did in our operations was make sure that the opt-out form was accessible through the parent portal and not just something that is like the bullying form that needs to be easily accessible and accessible to all and embedded on every school's webpage, that this one is because of parents opt-out for religious reasons to any curricular materials involving LGBTQ materials and/or content. I would like to make, put this out there in that, you know, we want to be inclusive. We are for all students. Representation is important. You need to see yourself past, present, future, good, bad, ugly, in, in the curricular materials and in the work that, that you're doing. However, this is not something, this is not something that we chose to do. This is not something that it was, hey, we, I, we believe. This is also, and this is the important part, we are not changing the curriculum that is approved or that has been created. That, this is, you know, the closest that we have come to was thinking about the child in mind and go, okay, if there is objectionable material, is there an alternate or another piece of curriculum that this student could engage in so that the, the, those power standards, if you will, are still, are still encouraged, or they're still engaging with? That is not required. If the answer is no, it is no. It, the curriculum and the instructional material and the instructional plan does not change at the request of that parent. That student is ultimately removed from instruction, using that curricular mater, curricular material and other academic work is given in its stead. And that is explained in terms of the, the description as well as reiterated, I believe, as well in the form. And should any of the, any of the information that comes to us through that form, if it is in any way a discrepancy with, we cross-check it with what is in Skyward, and if there's a discrepancy based off of what is submitted, we reach out to that family to make sure that it is in fact themself, that it is them who is, is, is giving that opt, is giving that opt-out. But our teachers ultimately, and our curriculum and what has been approved and what has been written and what students in the classroom, while under the direct instruction of those who are hired to do it, does not change as a result of this, of this change in operations.
So I just want to clarify. We remain an inclusive school district. We will support our LGBTQ plus students whenever, what, in whatever way we can. We have not changed our policy, curriculum, procedures. Nothing has changed. It's just that we are communicating the opt-out. That we've always had the opt-out form. It's just the communication was generated because of the recent court case. But our support for these students and this community remain, and, and again, we want to make sure that all students feel welcome, it's safe and supported. So I think this was an important discussion, just so that we could clarify that, that we have not made any changes.
Yeah, I would, I was in that meeting on the policy meeting. First, I want to say thank you to especially the community members that did show up both tonight and who are on the policy committee. We did have a pretty robust conversation with attorneys in the room. I can't remember that there was the person.
I just want to be, so with, with, with community comment by someone who was an attorney. It was not, it was not with district council.
Right.
So, and it was part of their public comment. It was not solicitation of a, another attorney's opinion in order to make the, have those conversations. Those conversations were happening as a posted agenda item for the policy subcommittee.
Yes. And so I want to also reiterate what is being said is that, you know, it's one of those things where it was really about the people who don't want to have their children in there as opposed to the people who are in there and who are part of and being included in our school systems and how important that is, and to, to make sure that all people are included, are seen, are heard and part of the community.
So one of the things that Westwind pointed out in their, in our equity audit was that, that there were there were pieces of the curriculum that addressed equity issues that were not being used by the teachers because they were optional. And I'm wondering if this, if any of those section, optional sections are related to these issues and how we make sure teachers are actually using material that people could opt out of. Instead of getting an opt-out and saying, I just won't teach it, how do we make sure that it's still being taught?
So, I mean, ul- ultimately, the, you know, so we have now, so we have instructional coordinators. We also have highly, you know, the adopted curriculum. Implementing that with fidelity is both not only the responsibility of, of the grade-level teachers, the team and those instructional coordinators and the administrators going through. So while that has not been a, an aspect that we've tackled yet in terms of the, in terms of the equity audit by, and I think that's more for me. I, I took that as the, in the curriculum that's selected most, if not all of the diversity and inclusion that's being added to the curriculum is done so as the extra, not as the primary. And so we've not had a analysis of going, okay, well, are we able to switch that? Do we switch that and, and respond in that, in that manner? But it's, you know, it's definitely a, something we can look into in terms of, I, you know, I'll fully acknowledge that, you know, this, that there is a real fear from folks that this could have a chilling effect. However, you know, in terms of, I've gotten no reports from any principal, from union presidents that people are not or are changing out of, out of fear. And additionally, what we're doing is, is making sure that, that we provide, if there's a curricular resource that is planned, again, this is not something that come, if it's, if it, if something comes up in conversation or comes up organically or responding to student need, those things are dealt with. Those are not curricular pieces. But if there are curricular materials, we are giving, making sure that the parent has advanced access to those to make sure it's what they, make sure it's what they think. To make sure it's what they, make sure it's what they think it is. Um, and and to then, because again, we want to make sure that students are exposed to, you know, those. Ideas they disagree with and that they're challenged with. And so, um, again, to the level that we can insist that that happens. Um, isn't possible, but it is something that in terms of immediate feedback or feedback through. Um, channels, through principals or building representatives is not anything that I've received to date since this is.
And I just want to make sure a lot of our teachers, elementary school teachers have their own classroom library. And they could have a book that is about LGBTQ family. That would not be something could be opted out of, but if the whole class were reading a story the next day. They were about the same family, they would have to give advance notice to everyone in the class that story is being read by the.
James, you were writing down the questions as the community member was speaking. Do you, have we? Are there any questions we need to address that we haven't addressed yet?
I, I think the uh, um. The, the, some of the questions are around concerns uh, outside of what would be considered the curriculum and really what this opt out is. Addressing is what's being taught in the curriculum. It doesn't mean there's not. Those materials available like the, like Mr. Shear's point, having a book, book available on the shelf is one thing, but. Putting that as part of the curriculum as a teachable item is another, and that's what this is addressing uh, here. Uh, at least what the opt out form is for, for people to, um, you know, parents to have, have a choice there and and whether they. Uh, want their children to, you know, be part of that uh, part of that curriculum piece. Um, so I don't think it would impact, you know, some of the things that that we're talking about here. Uh, they're, they're asked, I don't think it's going to be impacting counseling because that's not really part of curriculum. It's not, um, you know. As far as like, is there a metric for religious versus political? I'm not sure if that was adequately addressed. Maybe we can address that, that. Um, point of it. Uh, and then the other question was, is it a case by case or a blanket opt out? So I think those are two questions that we haven't really fully addressed. But I think my, my interpretation of it is that was a case by case. Basis that someone could review the materials, determine, I don't want my student exposed to this material because it goes against my religious beliefs. Um, and then they would be opting out of that material specifically. So it wouldn't be a blanket opt out of all. Materials across the board. I think it would just be. Um, you know, on a case by case basis from, um, you know, year to year uh, basis as they, they go through the system. Um, but I guess was, you know, one of the questions was a metric around religious versus political. So I don't know if that was fully. Addressed as far as what the, when the, when the parent is submitting the opt out form. Uh, the basis of the ruling was around religious objections. So I'm not sure if this opt out form. Addresses that piece of it or or not.
Uh, it does not and it cannot. Um, I, you know. You know, measuring someone's faith or commitment or adherence to is not something that. Can, I believe can be measured or I can't, uh, nor do I believe the Google or the Google forums have that. Um, and is not something that I would recommend that this body or this community get involved in. Um.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was just asking the question as, as I was presented.
I mean, basically, we're just, what we did was power the law. Because the laws, you know, we have a lot of Rhode Island general law. That are aligned around school districts and when they say we have to, we do. And oftentimes what that, what happens with that is they don't have. The better interest of students and families and schools in general, when they're putting out these. Demands to put such laws or they put the laws in, but then now they want us to implement them. And this is what happened, right? So with the element of situation, a lot of questions about this out there in our, our form. Um, when. On our behalf, there was no harm to be created. We weren't trying to harm anybody. We're basically just doing what we're told to do. And again, oftentimes this is the outcome of that. So we do support our LGBTQ community one hundred percent. I do. Um, and I know our district does and I think that's really. What the clarification here is, is that they can come to school, they're saved, they're heard, they're wanted. And, you know, we just have to know that we're putting this in place because it's what state law says we have to do.
I, I just want to thank community members for being here tonight. Um, those who wrote emails to us. Um, with concerns, um, you know, it's. It's difficult to navigate. Court cases now and we're just trying to make sure that we're following. The edicts from RIDE, um, following our attorney's advice. But at the end of the day, we didn't make any changes to the policy or or anything. It was. Um, the opt out form was always available, just that there's a lot more communication right now. But thank you for advocating. For the students. Um, I appreciate everybody that took the time to do that. It's always appreciated.
Um, I am not sure if I misunderstood one of the things you said, but I'm going to comment on what I think I heard. And my first comment is I read all the emails um. That I received and I did not respond to them because I was waiting for tonight's discussion. In case there was something out there that I hadn't clued into. Um. So, um, this opt out form. As I understand it, Mr. Padraza, is for families, not teachers.
That's correct.
Okay, that I, I wanted to clarify that point. And, um, we do not. We have to give this choice to families that. Don't want their child to read a particular book about a particular topic. Um. Well, we have to give them that choice. Um. And there was a mention about our older students, um, kind of protected. Um, and and we have, we have, we have that in place with our, um. Counselors for older students who who may um, need some extra. Um, but um, thank you for putting this on the agenda and I think we've kind of handled all the. All the questions, you know, I mean, I think it was. I know last year, Mr. Shear brought up the resolution on banned books week. And I think that was last week that we are against banned books. Um, and. I made the statement that you can decide you don't want your child to read that book, but you can't decide. No child in the district can read it. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Michelle. Alright, um, with that, we're going to move on to the next item. Discussion, action, uh, policy number eight, four, six, five, K through twelve cellphone policy update first read.
Right, so this is an update, an update to our cellphone policy, which actually formed uh, some of the basis for the state law that recently went into place. And although we still have, I think, another year or two to put, uh, you know, put the things in place. It did make some exceptions that we did not have in our policy that I thought was prudent to, to add in uh, to our policy. So there's really no changes to it, except at the end of the policy, there's now such a section for exceptions. And I'll read that for the record, uh, because it's fairly brief. Uh, exceptions shall be made for student personal devices that provide access to assistive technology necessary to comply. With individualized student five oh four plans, individualized education plans, I E P. Medical needs such as glucose monitoring and or a plan to support emergent multi-language, the multilingual learners, M L L students. With appropriate language access programs and services to ensure the provision of appropriate meaningful public education. The allowable exceptions shall be written into the student's identified plan and approved by the appropriate team or coordinator. Uh, so that is the extent of the text we want to add to the policy. This is a first read, so we don't need an action tonight, just uh. If there are any comments or concerns, um, you know, questions, certainly happy to field them.
I have, I have a quick question. Um, what if somebody has a need, but it's not necessarily in an I E P U or a five oh four? I mean, could it be somebody has a hearing aid that they, that they use their cellphone to? Um. To, to, you know, change the settings on and things like that. I mean, so, yeah, like. I mean, we're assuming that it would always be written in a plan, which probably would be, but. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Um, this, this language was given to us by our attorneys, uh, as far as what to add. And I, I believe it is based on the text of the general law uh, that was passed. So, um, it does. Not, you know, addresses medical needs such as approved glucose monitoring, but then, you know, it does also go on to say that it would be part of the students. Identified plan. So I don't know if glucose monitoring would be part of a student's plan, probably not. I don't know. Um. So it does kind of leave that open for vague, you know, vague interpretation a little bit, um, but is what, again, you know. Going by what the law says and what, what we have to abide by, this is what the text of what was uh, given to us.
I would think that's covered by medical need.
I think this exception makes sense. Um, but as a person who. Uh, wears hearing device and uses my phone to help enhance that ability to hear. Um, I have yet to find a computer or something that is compatible. So, you know, it is a great exception to have in there and it should, as you put in there, follow the identified plan. You know, so that we don't have a lot of students running around, oh, I am an I P, you know, and there's no real. Documentation on it. So, yeah.
I would think, I would think the plan could be so, something as simple as documentation, like you, to your point, maybe there's a medical exception that is. Provided by the student's doctor says that he has to use, he or she has to use this. Uh, cellphone to control their, you know, otherwise they, you know, they might not be able to catch all the impacts of learning ability, right? So, um, yeah.
I, I guess if there's a loose or a broad interpretation of medical needs, I, I think Brad's right. It could probably fall under there. It's not necessarily medical, but you could probably say that it is. I mean, they come from an audiologist who isn't a doctor. I mean, it's a little different, but I think if we're open to having a broad definition of that, probably works.
So I haven't, just another question. Seems like. I can imagine a whole lot of technologies that would help with the wide variety of different I E Ps. But it seems like this gives a blanket exemption, exemption if you have, say, an I E P and your phone serves one function for you. The policy seems to exempt you from the entire policy if your phone serves that one function. So. Can I be at lunch watching YouTube because I've got an I E P that helps me in math class, that my phone has. Something else that helps me in math class, or am I limited to the phone? Being used for that particular purpose. It's not, to me, the way it's written seems like I just, if I have an I E P and. My phone allows, helps me perform one function, I have a blanket exemption to the entire policy. I can use it all day for whatever I want.
Well, I think, I think that's covered in the, the last kind of clause there. You can say, um. You know, after M L L says with appropriate language access programs and services to ensure the provision of appropriate meaningful public education. I think, I think that would, I, I would read that to mean you can't use it to watch YouTube during lunch. Yeah.
As long as our administrators agree that they, that that's how it reads, so they can enforce that, then I think it's okay.
Any comments from Adam on that? Anyway.
So, yeah. It's a, something that we can make as a point of emphasis. Uh, additionally, we could, uh. We'll have counsel at our next meeting. And so if there were addendum uh, to be proposed, we could. Uh, hear from counsel. I could also, uh, I can bring this up to uh, building administrators to. To get their, to get their read on it before next meeting.
Since it is a first read, that gives us an opportunity to make additional adjustments before the final adoption of the updated policy. So. Oh, I think that, that's fine. So we'll get some more insight in our next meeting.
I think it would be good to run this by building administrators to make sure the language is um, defined enough so that. They could enforce, no, you can't be watching YouTube at lunch. So I think that would be important to make sure that we're, we're clear. Um, but so, thank you for offering to do that. And then we'll bring it back for a second read at our next meeting. Alright, that will bring us to the school building committee update. And since Kate. Is over at the town council, we're going to have Mr. Padraza give us that update.
Okay, building committee update. Um, so, um, the main thing being discussed. Uh, right now is that many bidders have asked for additional time um, for the larger uh, bids. Gilbane, excuse me, has reported that this will not change the overall timeline and that it can be accommodated. And this is what is being discussed this evening at the town council and approved is whether that um, end bid date to some of those early bids can get. Can, if they can gain an extra week um, by that and ensure that our timeline will not change. Um, there has been uh, the formation of a change order committee that will meet weekly to approve or deny change orders. Uh, based on certain criteria, based on the amount. Um. And this is being done, it has representation from all of the bodies. Um. And ultimately, we uh, at tomorrow's building, or excuse me, on Thursday's building committee meeting. We are just short one member and that would be one additional member from the building committee to serve on that committee. The thinking being that if all of a sudden there was, we don't want a five thousand dollar change order or request to hold up everything. And we'll wait because there's not a meeting scheduled. As such, the longest they would have to wait is one week in order to move forward. Based on the scope and scale. Um, and the last one again, we meet again uh, this Thursday at six o'clock in town council chambers. Uh, the highlight being that, uh, or what I think is, I think is the highlight, um. Certain interior fixtures will be on display. So, uh, even though it's somewhat of a generic uh. Walk or flyby, um, some of those fixtures will be, uh, samples will be available to view and have comments on. So it will hopefully be a quick meeting.
So, two things. One, you'll be happy to know that my microphone also went out.
Okay.
Second is you, you did get approval, according to Kate. I just texted her and asked her if she got approval from the town council. On that, so that was a yes. And my third thing is. I'm glad we started at six o'clock because it's nine twenty and I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
I think we're all grateful that we made that change in the bylaws. It gave us flexibility. So, thank you. We have a motion. And a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned at nine twenty.